And we're live.
The chair notes the time is six oh two. I call this meeting of the Amherst zoning board of appeals to order. My name is Steve Judge as ZBA chair. I want to welcome everyone to this meeting. We'll begin with the roll call of the ZBA members. Steve Judge is present. Mr. David Al- Alfeld.
Present.
Mr. John Varner.
Present.
Ms. Hilda Greenbaum.
Present.
Ms. Roswana Khan.
Present.
Those are our members for the, for our second panel tonight, our first full hearing tonight. And I also want to note the presence of Mr. Everett Henry, who has, will be there for the, uh, the final matter tonight. So a quorum is present. Also attending tonight's hearing is Dave Washevitz, Assistant Building Commissioner and Jacinta Williams, a planner for the town. Pursuant to chapter 20 of the Acts of 21 extended by chapter two of the Acts of 2023. This meeting will be conducted via remote means. Members of the public who wish to observe the meeting may do so via Zoom or by telephone. No in-person attendance of the members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. The zoning board of appeals is a quasi judicial body that operates under the authority of chapter 48 of the general laws of the commonwealth for the purposes of promoting the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Amherst. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, and Article 10 Special Permit Granting Authority of the Amherst Zoning Bylaw, this public meeting has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and mailed to parties at interest. All hearings and meetings are open to the public and are recorded by town staff, and they may be viewed via the Town of Amherst YouTube channel and the ZBA webpage. The procedure is as follows. The petitioner presents the application to the board during the hearing, after which the board will ask questions for clarification or to gather additional information. After the board has completed its questions, the board will seek public input. The public speaks with the permission of the chair. If the member pu- of the public wishes to speak, they should so indicate by using the raised hand function on their screen or by pressing star nine on their phone. The chair with the assistance of the staff will call upon people wishing to speak. When you are recognized, provide your name and address to the board for the record. All questions and comments must be addressed to the board. The board will normally hold public hearings where information about a project and the input from the public is gathered, followed by public meetings for each. The public meeting portion is when the board deliberates and is generally not an opportunity for public comment. If the board feels it has enough information and time, it will decide upon the applications tonight. Each petition heard by the board is distinct and evaluated on its own merits, and the board is not ruled by precedent. Statutorily, for a special permit, the board has 90 days from close of the hearing to file a decision. For a variance, the board has 100 days on the date of filing of the variance to file his decision. No decision is final until the written decision is signed by the sitting board members and is filed with the town clerk's office. Once the decision is filed with the town clerk, there is a 20-day appeal period for an aggrieved party to contest the decision with a relevant judicial body in Superior Court. After the appeal period, the permit must be recorded at the Registry of Deeds to take effect. Tonight's agenda. A public hearing on ZBA FY 20-25, 2025-09, 6365 Salem Street. Applicant seeks to come into compliance with ZBA's seven, seven, uh, zoning bylaws, 7.0001 and 7.0002 per enforcement letter that was received regarding parking for properly, property located at 6365 Salem Street. Map 15A parcel 77 RG, General Residence Zoning District. This is continued from December 12th, 2024. ZBA FY 2025-13, 28 Green Leaf Drive. Request to amend the FY 2004-47 special permit by eliminating the community building and converting the converted dwelling into a community room in buildings 24 through 28, constructing a new parking area and deleting the requirement to deed land and easement to the town for property located at 28 Green Leaves Drive. Map 13D parcel 79, PRP Professional Research Park Zoning District. And ZBA FY 2025-16, 422 Amity Street. Request to amend the FY 2024-11 variance for modification of conditions one and two to raise the building slightly so that the maximum height, when measured from grade, will be 59.5 feet for property located at 422 Amity Street. Map 13B parcels 18, 27, 28, and 54 BL Limited Business Zoning Districts. Following that is a general public comment period on any matters not before the board tonight. Other business not anticipated within 48 hours and adjournment. The first order of business tonight is ZBA FY 2025 at Salem Street, 6365 Salem Street. Um, it's my understanding that, well, not my understanding is the fact that we do not have uh, sufficient members of the panel to discuss this matter. Uh, we, so we have to postpone to continue this matter to a date certain, and that date as negotiated with the applicant is April 10th. So this, um, without objection, since we don't have that panel before us, we can't request a vote from the panel that's on this matter. So without objection, I'm going to move to continue this, um, but I'm going to move that we continue this to, uh, April 10th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Is there objection? No objection, so ordered. The next order of business is FY 2025-13, 28 Leaves Drive. Request to amend the FY 2004-47 special permit by eliminating the community building and converting dwelling unit into a community and converting a dwelling unit into a community room in building 24 through 28, constructing a new parking area and deleting requirements to deed land and easements to the town for property located at 28 Green Leaves Drive. Map 13D parcel 79 PRP Professional Research District. We had a site visit on the 11th on Tuesday at the site visit. We observed, or members, excuse me, first, members on this panel are Judge Varner, Alfeld, Greenbaum, and Khan. We had a site visit on Tuesday, March 11th at the site visit. We observed the site originally proposed for the community building, and now is, uh, the building will not be constructed there. And questioned the owners about how the proposed parking on that site will be finished. We asked questions about the layout of the proposed community rooms in each building and whether there would be kitchens, et cetera, and how the rooms will be used. We observed from the parking lot the progress in the new building. We also noted the absence of a, of a management plan, uh, landscape and lighting plan in the application and stated a need for those to be submitted. We asked about the rail trail access and whether the stormwater drainage system was consistent with the approved plan. Um, I think that pretty much sums up the site visit. Is there any member who wishes to, um, add to that description of our site visit? All right. Um, submissions. The following has been submitted by the applicant, the ZBA FY 2025 dash 13 application, an addendum to a special permit application submitted December 3rd, 2024. Um, Ahmed Development TOA letter submitted December 20th, 2024. Amhad, excuse me, I pronounced it wrong. Amhad Site Plan 123024 submitted December 30th, 2024. Building 28 construction schedule submitted December 3rd, 2024. Building 28 floor plan submitted December 3rd, 2024. Parking lot plan submitted December 3rd, 2024, and a management plan submitted March 13th, 2025. Staff submissions include, um, Route 9, this, uh, 1990 Route 9 decisions, 1996 Route 9 404 North Hampton Road decisions, 1998 Route 9 North Hampton decisions. These are all old decisions regarding this property. 1999 Route 9 North Hampton decisions. Uh, 2004 dash 00047 North Hampton Road and Green Leaves Drive decisions, one. 2004 00047 North Hampton Road and Green Leaves Drive decision, two. Um, and we also have public comment submitted by, um, Susan Cummings on March 3rd. I think that's all the, um, submissions for the this, this application. Is it not Jacinta?
That is correct, yes.
All right. So that, that concludes the submissions. My question is, does any member on the board have any disclosures to make regarding this application? All right. We'll move on. Uh, who's representing the applicant tonight?
I'm sorry. Sorry, I was on mute. I, I will be representing the applicant along with the project engineer, David Robinson, um, and with the, um, on the ground, uh, supervisor of the constructions, uh, Susan Mongian.
So would each of you give me your name and address for the record? We'll start with you, Mr. Allison.
Yes, my name is Donald Allison, and my office address is 69 South Pleasant Street, Suite 203 in Amherst.
Great.
Oh, two.
Ms. Mongian?
My address is 27 Green Leaves Drive, Amherst, Mass, um, Unit 708, under Green Leaves Realty Group.
And I may have mispronounced your last name, so would you give me your name correctly?
Suzanne Munjin.
Munjin, thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Uh, Dave Robinson, uh, my, uh, Massachusetts office is at 43, um, um, uh, and Echo Hill, Amherst.
All right. Great. Um, Mr. Allison, are you going to do the presentation?
Yes, I'll, I'll, I'll just do the presentation and except insofar as it applies to any engineering questions, um.
All right, you may proceed.
Thank you. Um, a- a- as I'm sure the panel is well aware, this is a project that's been going on for a while. It was originally permitted in the eighties, 88, I believe, as a living care, um, community. Uh, i- i- it has progressed through a number of stages. The first building built was building number 23, which is not actually part of this. Um, that was its own separate condominium. The permit, the special permit that we're seeking to amend is the permit that was issued in 2004 relating to the five buildings, which, uh, four of which are now condominium number three, and the fifth, the final phase, building 28, will be added to condominium number three, um, when it's completed and there's a, a certificate of occupancy, uh, issued for the building. Um, we are essentially requesting two modifications to the permit approved in 2004. Um, one, uh, is a request to remove from, uh, the condition of the permit, the deeding of a, of a small parcel of land on the far southern end of the property, which was, which was a condition of which it was that it be deeded to the town, um, along with an easement to the town to have access to the, um, to the bike path. Uh, the town has indicated, and I believe you have a copy of, one of the submissions was a letter from, um, uh, from the assistant, I guess, uh, town manager, um, Mr. Zomak, actually, uh, indicating the town did not wish to take title to that parcel of land or, um, to, uh, the easement that was part of the requirements in the 2004 permit. Um, so we are asking that that condition in the 2004 permit that we were seeking to amend be eliminated. Um, the second is that the 2004 permit and the site plan that was approved in connection with that permit called for a community building to be built between what is now buildings 25 and building 27. Um, and a- as the progress in the condominium progressed, it became clear to the developers that the, um, uh, the residents, the unit owners would prefer a community suite. Um, one of the units to become a community room within each of the five buildings. Uh, and so we are seeking to eliminate the requirement of a community building, um, and to substitute for it, the requirement that there be a unit designated in each of the buildings as a community space, a community unit. Um, I believe you all have all of that information, but those are the two essential pieces of what we're asking for with respect to the 2004 permit that we're seeking to modify. I, I would point out one thing as I, as I read, um, you know, as, as I read the report from the planning department, um, and it, and it's really my mistake, so, so I'll take responsibility for it. Um, one of the issues that has been raised is, uh, the issue of a catch basin. Oh, and I'm sorry, I, I should back up and say where the community building was to be built, which was in a, a, a lot between buildings 25 and 27, um, we proposed to substitute parking spaces. Um, and, and in, in fact, um, those parking spaces, and I, I see that, um, Jacinta is sharing a copy of the actual approved permit. Um, i- in any event, those parking spaces are, are currently being used as parking spaces. They are gravelled, um, and there is, as you can see on that site plan, a catch basin uh, at one, on, on one side of that parking, uh, area. Um, showing an existing sewer line. I, I realized when I took a look at the actual site plan that was approved back in 2004 that that case, catch basin is actually there as part of that site plan and was installed and approved at that time, um, connecting to, uh, uh, connecting to an existing stormwater. Um, so I, I, we don't have the original, I don't think that's the original approved plan that's up, but the original approved plan that I'm looking at, um, signed by the planning board, I mean, by the zoning board in, on February 14th, 2004, shows those two catch basins, which at the time were on either side of the proposed community building. But they were there. They have been installed there consistent with that, um, approved site plan. Uh, and I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. That, that is my failure to actually notice that early on and bring it to anybody's attention. Um, but that's essentially what it is we're asking the zoning board to do. Um, yeah, I, she just pulled up, if, if you could, Jacinta, pull up that. If you can see those two catch basins on either side of the community building, that, that is the original, this is the original approved site plan, and they show it connecting to, um, the existing stormwater plan. So there's nothing new about those catch basins. I guess that's just what I'm trying to say. Um, what is new is the parking that's going to take place there, um, but not, not the catch basins themselves. Um, I don't.
Excuse me, are the catch basins a CB 20 and the CB 18? Is that what the catch basins are? Down below there?
No, they're up, they're, they're up there. They're circled, one circled in pink right there.
Oh, both the catch basins are up there?
Yes, and they're, they're connected to the existing, I mean, as part of the original plan, the stormwater system. Um, and that's the pipe that comes down from the catch basins up in the parking area. Um, the, you know, between the buildings, uh, between building 25 and, and 24 and between 27 and 6. So there's nothing new about those catch basins. Um, m- my mistake was thinking because there was a community building there, the catch basins couldn't have been there, but it turns out they were. Um, and, and they were approved back in 2004.
So I, I don't want to, I don't want to interrupt you, but I want to keep on this, this topic and then let you go back.
Sure.
When we were, I think I read that you intend to pay, when you pave this area, you intend to be sure that the catch basins are three inches below the paved surface.
That is.
So, and is that, that, so they're below on, they're not in the paved area, but they're outside the paved area and below it. Is that correct?
Um, I, I, I'm not, I would, I would defer to Mr. Robinson on that, but it looked like, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, the one that you've just circled on the screen there, uh, to the, to the right of the community building, uh, that is actually in the, in the new parking area. Uh, and, uh, is, is planned on picking up the water from the parking area that will flow to it. Uh, the actual, uh, top of that catch basin will be adjusted properly to, uh, the, whatever the pavement level ends up to be, uh, when that park, when that parking lot is paved. Uh, the one on the other side of the parking lot, it will just stay as it is and is not located in the parking lot. It's in a garden area.
All right. Thank you. The reason I asked is I noted that the, when we were at the site visit, that the property below the parking area, there's a grade down and there's catch basins down below that. So these are on, these are on the side of a community where the community building would have been, and then these other two cats, these catch basins, 20 and 18 are lower and they will pick up other things and put that into the stormwater line. Is that correct?
No.
Okay, got it. Thank you. That's all I had. Go ahead, Mr. Allison. I'm sorry.
I mean, I believe th- those are the only two issues. Um, I, i- we, we meet the number of parking spaces. Actually, we exceed the number parking spaces required by the 2004 permit. Um, and, uh, a- as, as I think you can see from the management plan that, uh, a- as I said, it's a, it, it's a, it's an existing condominium. Um, you know, Green Leaves Condominium Number Three, um, whi- which right now consists of building 24, 25, 26, and 27. Um, uh, it is managed, as all condominiums are, by a condominium trust, and the condominium trust has hired, uh, Caymans, uh, to manage the property, collect, uh, the, the condominium dues, uh, and to take care of, uh, you know, the, the general upkeep, the landscaping, the mowing, the trimming of, of bushes and shrubs, um, a- and, and all of the kind of exterior maintenance on the existing condominium. Th- this is what we're really at is a final phase of that condominium, which is the addition of building 28 to, to the existing four-building condominium. Um, the, a- as I also think you can see from the management plan, Caymans has contracted with, um, Four Seasons to take care of, uh, the landscaping issues and the snow removal issues, um, and has contracted with Republic, uh, to do the, uh, trash and recycling removals. Um, all of the trash and recycling, uh, locations are fenced and are, um, are noted on the, on the site plan. Um, I have, I have nothing else unless people have some questions of me.
Okay. I got a quick question. So there currently is 222 parking spaces on the site that are paved, not counting the, um, unpaved portion that where the community building was going to be, and you're going to add 11 more spaces?
That, that is correct. I think.
But a total of how many, and are you converting any other spaces or how, total of how many parking spaces will you have at the end of the day?
Um, I, I believe Ms. Munjin can speak to that since she went out there and counted them herself.
I, I apologize. I can't get my camera to work, but, um, Dawn, the total minus, the total um, was on the newest site plan minus one.
So.
Okay.
I don't have the, I apologize. I don't have it in front of me, and if it, I, it's so small, I can't see it. But on what we, what Dawn, um,
You have.
What Dawn brought in, it had the total amount, and I, when I went through the parking lots a couple of times, um, it, it came out to be minus one of the total that's written on the plan. But there's still additional, if yes, if you could show me that. Um.
So you had 222.
Yes.
You're adding 11. You had 222. You're adding 11, but you're minusing one. So you're adding 10?
Right. Yes.
Okay, so you have 232 parking spaces.
Yes.
Yes.
So, okay. And the reason you're minusing one is for handicap access? Is that the reason?
It's for an access, yes.
Okay. All right.
And as I think you saw when you were out there, uh, the, it, it's not all paved, but they're all lined and marked. Um, the handicap spaces are all clearly marked.
Yep. All right. Um, do, uh, yes, Mr. Alfeld.
Could we go back to the, uh, drawing you sent to of the, uh, parking lot that you had up a moment ago? Just had a question about that. Was the, um, and this is a question for, for uh, the proponents here. Were those original, uh, catch basins and, um, storm sewers designed to pick up the roof of the community building? And what I'm thinking is, here is capacity of those lines. Are we adding new flow that wasn't anticipated?
No, there's no, there's no, uh, new flow, uh, a- at all, uh. Uh, the, uh, uh, catch basins were, were put in, uh, at some point after 204, I guess, uh, I don't have the exact date, but the, uh, uh, they're, they're, they're on the existing lines and what, and the, the amount of water, uh, is, uh, capable of going through those lines because there's only just one on each, each line.
And as I understand it, then the, the whole parking, the whole new parking lot would drain into and be sloped towards the uh, single catch basin in the.
That's right.
In the lower right corner.
Yeah, that's correct, yes.
That was it. Thank you.
And so, Mr. Alfeld, are you asking if there is sufficient drainage, um, going into that, that line from that catch basin because of the?
Yeah, what I, what I'm curious about, or what I was just speculating about was that you're adding new drainage area here with the new parking lot, and that is, has to be carried by the, uh, storm sewer line, uh, wherever it takes the stormwater. Um, and I asked about the roof because if the, if the roof of the community building was intended to go into that storm sewer line, then it's already been sized for roughly the same drainage area.
Yes, that, that's correct. That, that, uh, roof was designed to go into those two, uh, uh, one on one side and one on the other of the, of the community building because the community building literally was going to take up that whole space that the parking lot is, uh, uh, shown on now because, uh, uh, the, it, to the left of the parking lot, uh, the, the people have put in their gardens and that's not being interrupted. Uh, so that, so that actually the, the, the parking lot is a little smaller than what the building would have covered on the same, on that, on that lot.
Okay, so that.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Alfeld. I'm sorry.
Well, that would, that would confirm that the capacity of the pipes must be sufficient to carry the flow.
Absolutely, that was checked. The capacity was checked and everything so that, uh, everything is worked out perfectly, uh, uh, with that, and, uh, we don't have to use the second catch basin, uh, on the left-hand side of the parking lot, uh, because, uh, I didn't want to interrupt the, uh, tenants' gardens and get them upset, so, uh, everything works out to, to, uh, flow to that one that's pink circled right now.
And just to clarify, in periods of a large storm, high, or a high storm hi- high rainwater amounts, you're not seeing standing water in the existing areas. It's all making its way through that catch basin and getting out. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, that would, that's, that's to handle a hundred-year storm.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Alfeld. That was good. Uh, Ms. Greenbaum? Oh, you're muted.
I know I'm muted. I was working on. I don't know whether this is, calls into this part of the. I don't know whether this is, calls into this part of the, the hearing or whether we're gonna get to it shortly. But I don't see any lighting in that parking lot.
I mean, I know David, uh, can speak to that, but there is lighting, um, on the, the sides of building twenty-five that is downcast lighting, um, but, uh, Ms. Mungian and, and Mr. Robinson can speak to that directly.
Yes, there are, there is lighting on the buildings and, uh, in talking with the people that have parked there for twenty years. They say that it is more than enough, uh, they're happy with what's there and, uh, they, they really, uh, don't need any more lighting on that area. Uh, because, uh, the, the lighting on the buildings is, is taking care of it. Uh, so we don't have any proposed new lighting, uh, going in there to brighten that up anymore than, than it already is. Because the people that have been using it for so long are extremely happy with it. I talked with them personally. And, uh, uh, that's, that's the outcome of that.
Well, I.
The highlighted yellow area of their lighting, the, the highlighted yellow markings are lights, is that correct?
Yes.
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 I would like a lighting plan, actually.
The lighting is all compliant, dark sky compliant. All the lights are the dark sky compliant or light, sky dark compliant. I called the electrician to verify that.
That's not my issue. My issue is what are, what are the foot candles or whatever the number, the unit is that they use, that how bright that parking lot is so that elderly people are safe entering and exiting their automobiles. You know, we don't see so good in the dark as, as you young folks do. And so I wanna know how bright that parking lot is with the current. Well, that's why I'm asking the question. I thought a lighting plan was part of the, um, packet.
We have two of the lamp, we have two of the lamp posts at the beginning and then there's, there's lights on the building.
Uh, yeah, but I know how much, how much, um, foot candles or whatever the unit is that shows how much is on the ground where people have to walk. I know you got the lights there, but what's the, what's the power coming off them?
So, uh, you know, if I can, Ms. Greenbaum, one of the problems that we're facing is that I don't think twenty years ago, they were required to create a lighting, a photo, photo, photovoltaic. I think that's the right word.
Photometric.
Photometric, it's.
Okay, that's the word I was.
Yep, photometric. I know it's a photo something. Um, that's not a photocopy, a photometric. Um, plan as we require people to do today. And the issues before us are the community building site, which is going to be a parking lot. And the conversion of units within these built various buildings to community rooms. We don't generally have before as an issue that we can extend beyond those. We don't gen- we can't generally extend beyond those issues or, or things that relate directly to that issue. So I would say that you could request, that we could request that the lighting around the community building site, the parking lot, be, um, we get a, we get foot candles for what the lighting there will be because that's something that's.
That's what I'm asking for, Steve.
But just in that parking area, but not for the whole place?
No, 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 no. I'm talking about the parking area.
Okay, so that parking area.
Know that the lights on the building twenty-five and twenty-seven are adequate for safety.
So, because they're asking to, 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 um, that, we can put that in a condition. And I'll make a note of it that there be, um, a, um, a lighting plan for the parking area that's being constructed and that be submitted to us and to the building commissioner. And we'll talk about that under conditions. I mean, would that satisfy your concerns?
At the moment, yes. I'm, I'm not sure how to deal with it, but at the moment, I know that it's just for that area. And I wanna know that that area is safe.
Got it. Lighting, all right.
I can say that the people that I talked to were, were adamant in that they did not want to have any brighter lighting anywhere near around there because the sidewalks are lit very well and, uh, the lighting on the parking lot was adequate and they did not want to have any more brightness because then it becomes a problem getting into the windows of the, uh, units. Uh, and, uh, they were very, very strict on saying that they didn't want to have anything more. Uh, so that, uh, uh, I think that that would be a, a serious problem to, uh, suggest more lighting if it's requ- if you think it's required, uh, because then the people are going to, uh, probably disconnect it as soon as, as soon as we leave anyway.
Well, 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 I will defer my comments. So I have heard from more people.
Mr. Westgavitz.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to the conversation. It's possible nowadays that you can have, uh, motion sensors on lighting. So it could be bright enough for the use of the property, but it would be off during the times it's not necessary.
And you could have it directed down, you could put, potentially have it directed down so it didn't shine on the lights. Of, it didn't shine in the windows of the two buildings too, could you not?
Well, down, downcast is what you'd be sure, uh, trying to do, but.
Yeah.
Shield, you could do a combination of things with today's technology.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions, further questions, Ms. Greenbaum?
Well, are we coming to more things or, or are we done with this or is it gonna be more just more, um, presentation from the petitioner?
I think that's it from the petitioner. Um.
Okay, cause I do have questions. I do have, um, the other thing is, um, I would like to see the area that's going to be kept, not the, that the town doesn't want. And I, whether it's, the copies that I have are too small to see where it is.
It's.
Where's the rail trail, I guess, is my question.
Yeah, um, you, you're right. And it, it, it's difficult. It, 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 just if you could pull that up and move it over right there. It's, you see this lot, that, that, there's a, a lot dividing line. Actually, it's a, um, uh, uh, it's a, it's a separate lot as far as the town is concerned. It's a triangular pie-shaped lot at the far end. So you, you can only see the, um, hypotenuse line going up.
It's that, that tr- the right, the right triangle that's.
Yes.
On, on the edge and that.
It's right there. Yeah.
And so, so you're gonna get the, the rest over to the edge of the paper.
Yeah, and instead, there's a, there's, uh, if you pull it down, uh, a little bit, just into, you can see the back end of the parking here, um.
Well, show me the back end of the parking.
Pardon me?
Oh, there, okay.
Yeah, and then there's another access to the bike path, uh, that we already, that is already there. Um, what the town doesn't want is this triangular state shape that we pointed out earlier down here with this easement that we were going to have, which is on there. This is an existing path to the bike path. The town doesn't want that.
So, the, oh, if that's a road, then that's, that's got wetland boundaries on it.
Yeah, the, the town does, doesn't want that. And instead, what we have, and this connects to the whole fire loop, as you can see here, which goes all the way down and then out along the town's, um, uh, sewer line. There's a, the, the major town sewer line that, that splits, um, uh, that, that's right there. There's an existing gravel road which is over a town sewer line.
And that's a sewer line you cannot, then presumably.
Yeah, that's the, the, yeah, I'll zoom. It's a, the major sewer line.
Um, my other question had to do with the trash. Um, do you wanna, uh, answer questions about trash now?
Yep, you can ask those now.
I thought that Republic no longer existed as an entity.
Uh.
And, and it's not being managed very well, I guess, from what I've been reading.
I mean, I got, uh, I mean, I contacted Pat Caymans at Caymans, um, who, who, and, and, and he gave me the name Republic. I, uh, uh, actually, Ms. Mungian, who's actually there on a day-to-day basis, says that she sees, what is it, Sue, USA?
It's USA Halling.
USA, which is, I think they renamed Republic.
No, they, um, we, you know, we've been with USA for a long time now.
Okay, my last question is, after you take out the units in each building for co- community space, is that changing the number of units or not?
Um, it. Yes, and it, and it's reflected on the application. So instead of, um, each of the buildings except for twenty-six, e- except for each of those having thirty-nine units. Thirty-nine condominium units, they now have thirty-eight condominium units and one community unit. I mean, it's the same number of units. It's just, it's just only thirty-eight of them are sold to residents.
Okay, that's me for now.
All right. Who else has, do other people have questions? All right. If there's no further questions, uh, Mr. Alfeld.
Just one quick question. Uh, we have that GL twenty-eight map up. Do you know which unit will be the community, uh, space, the community room?
Um, Ms. Mungian can answer that specifically, but, um, it, it, they're different in different of the buildings. Um, but, but Sue, you can, you can tell them which the unit numbers are.
So building twenty-four is four oh seven, a building twenty-six is six oh seven. Building twenty-five is five oh two. Building twenty-seven will be seven zero eight and building twenty-eight. Once it's not being used, it will be unit eight oh eight.
Okay, these are typically on the first floor. Is that what that numbering scheme means?
They all are on the first floor, yes.
Okay, great.
Are they all accessible? Wide enough doorways and everything else?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything more, Mr. Alfeld?
Oh, just, and they're all, well, you, you, they're all apartment units. So I guess they have a bathroom and a kitchen and at least one bedroom. At least it's originally designed and that, of course, you're repurposing them, but that's, that's the basic layout of them. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions, comments, concerns from board members? I, uh, just one thing I'll, I'll say that, um, we've gotta change on the management plan, you've gotta change the name to the correct trash hall or we can make that a condition.
Yep.
Um, but the fact is that if you had the wrong, um, trash hall or listed, you have to come back to us and when you change and put the right one in. So we'll make that a condition of the, of the, of, of any approval that we may, may or may not make. Um, all right. If there's no other comments and questions from board members, and we'll go to public comment. So public comment is the opportunity for the public to ma- express their concerns, support, express comments about, um, this application before us. I would remind the members of the public that you speak, uh, with the permission of the chair. Um, we normally have a three-minute time limit on public comments. Um, and your comments should be directed to the chair and not to individuals, either other commenters or to the applicant. I understand that you, that, that several members, that we have, you have somebody who's representing a number of the owners who wishes to make a presentation that we, uh, which we received this, uh, this afternoon. Members of the board received this afternoon. Ms. Cum, I think it's Ms. Cummings, um, has expressed that she is representing a number of the, the commenters. And, or a number of the, the unit owners. And so what I, what we have discussed with the unit owners is instead of having, um, everybody speak to the same item that Ms. Cummings has four or five people who will yield her that they're three minutes. And you can proceed for about twelve, thirteen minutes with your presentation. I think that's a fair way to handle this because I, your presentation is much more than three minutes. And I understand that you're representing more than, you know, many of the unit owners. And so, Ms. Cummings, if you would identify which members have asked you to, to use their time for your presentation, that'd be helpful. I know you're try- there you go. Now you're, now you, did you hear the, um, my comments, Ms. Cummings?
Oh, yeah, yes, yes. So that.
Okay, oh, so here's what you need to do. Just give us your name and address.
Susan, twenty-seven Green Leaves Drive.
And then I know that there is a number of participants. Do you have, who are the participants that are yielding you their time so they don't speak twice?
Okay, uh, Gertrude Swain, Beverly Jemison, Jennifer Booker and Tina Day.
All right. So you have a total of, of you plus four. So you have a total of, you know, twelve, thirteen minutes, um, fourteen minutes to give your presentation. And those other people won't speak.
It's fifteen, actually, one.
Yeah, it's fifteen. It's fifteen.
Okay, wait a minute. I'm very new.
Yeah, I thought you said it was about twelve minutes, so I was, I was.
Yeah, right, but, um, okay, what do I do? Oh, Victoria, you, you, hold on. Somebody's helping me. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
There we go.
We're gonna start. Wait, I have to, I don't wanna get rid of these people. No, I wanna get rid of them. I don't wanna see them. This isn't distracting. Why do I do that? Oh, here, okay. Okay.
Let's play from start.
But it's not big enough. Is it big enough? Oh, okay.
Yeah, we see it very well. It's, it's.
Okay, there we go. Okay. So, thank you for this opportunity for Green Leaves Union Owners to highlight the concerns we've submitted. I'm speaking tonight for Trust Three Union Owners who agree with these concerns. Briefly, seventy-eight percent of owners supported these concerns in a twenty-twenty-three survey. Since then, the cer- the concerns have remained basically the same. Our owners contributed most recently in January twenty-twenty-five at building meetings. Our concerns are based on our experience living in Trust Three while it's been developed and controlled by Amhead. Some of us has had more than nineteen years' experience living here. We ask the ZBA to please find solutions to our concerns and to please add them as conditions to Amhead's special permit. I wanna add here that I was under the impression, because there's this major change from community building to community rooms, that the whole permit was opened up. I mean, we have concerns, not just in the area between twenty-five and twenty-seven. Uh, so, okay, so, uh, excuse me. Uh, the plan shows Trust Three at the upper right in its context. The trust currently includes four currently fully occupied buildings, twenty-four through twenty-seven. When building twenty-eight is fully occupied, the total number of units will be a hundred and, one, one hundred and eighty-five, sorry. Between buildings twenty-five and twenty-seven is where the new community building will be. All our specific concerns address one or more of our basic concerns that Amhead finished the trust in a manner that's complete according to Amhead's special permit, safe, free from fundamental defects and consistent from one building and area to the other. As you can imagine, living in a development of ultimately a hundred and eighty-five units, a development that's been under construction for nineteen years and counting, during which time our communication with the developer has unfortunately been of limited effectiveness. We do have a number of specific concerns. I'll briefly highlight them tonight. Concern one, the change from the community amenity for Trust Three is incomplete. Uh, briefly, eighty-two percent of respondents in a twenty-twenty-two survey preferred the community rooms. But this important change hasn't been documented in Amhead's special permit. Concern two, the development of the area between buildings twenty-five and twenty-seven, absent the community building is obviously incomplete. Here's the top of the slope where Amhead's community parking lot will be. Currently, there's informal parking for six cars, but ultimately there'll be nine spaces for regular cars and two for handicap. Th- this additional parking is very much needed to partially alleviate a shortage of parking in the trust. By the way, the numbers of the photos we show tonight are the numbers of the photos in appendix two of ours submitted to you. Of course, the parking area isn't properly designed for drainage, uh, Uh, we experience water going toward both buildings during precipitation events and isn't blacktopped with parking space lines curving, et cetera. This shows the slope, at the top of which is the currently informal parking. The few scattered stones you see were part of a boundary of stones that used to be at the top edge of the slope until probably a snowplow pushed them down. In front of the foreground of the photo is the entrance to the parking areas behind both buildings twenty five and twenty seven. As you see, the slope isn't stabilized except for some grass and weeds, isn't landscaped in keeping with the other landscaped areas of the trust, and currently isn't safe for residents who walk up and down it regularly. Amhad's site plan for the new community lot suggests putting stones again at the top edge of the slope. Would the ZBA consider fencing with reflectors as a safer and more lasting barrier? Also, the plan doesn't address the currently inadequate lighting in the middle of the top edge of the slope. This rough schematic of the top of the slope as it is today shows that the two sides aren't equivalent or consistent. On the building twenty five side, in addition to resident gardens and an outdoor gathering area, there's a sidewalk from the side door to the front sidewalk. Excuse me. Excuse me. I'm so sorry. You forgot to switch. This is the schematic. Okay, um, so you could, I'm so sorry. Uh, so you can see that there's a sidewalk on the twenty five side. There's no sidewalk on the other side, and a fence on the twenty five side which separates off the parking. By contrast, on the twenty seven side, there's some grass. These photos include some of the details or lack of details just mentioned, and also the two side door stairs, which aren't consistent. While the stairs on the building twenty five, twenty five side are made of long lasting treks, are safe because the stairs are narrow enough so residents can hold on to both handrails, and the top platform is mostly enclosed, providing additional safety. The stairs on the building twenty seven side are of deteriorating wood. One step, in fact, slants dangerously down. The steps are too wide for residents to hold on to both handrails, excuse me, and the top platform is less enclosed, thus less safe. Concern three, defect in number of parking spaces. The current number of parking spaces in Trust Three plus the additional spaces shown in Amhad's community lot plan is two hundred and twenty-eight according to our accounting, which we've counted several times. We estimate that the ratio of parking spaces per unit after the addition of the community lot will be one point two, vastly lower than the ratio of two generally required for complexes by Amherst bylaw. Amhad's parking spaces plan shows the different parking areas. Briefly, the main parking area in the front of twenty four through twenty seven, the lot at the far end of twenty six, which also faces the front of twenty eight, a lot at the far side of twenty eight, and back of both buildings twenty five and seven, and twenty seven, some parallel parking, and back of buildings twenty five, twenty seven, and twenty eight garages. And there'll be the community lot between twenty five and twenty seven. To be clear, buildings twenty four and twenty six have no garages and no parking in back. This chart shows the current capacity for regular parking in the trust and the number of spaces observed filled on December twentieth, a Saturday, and or December twenty one, a Sunday in twenty twenty-four, when no one was working on building twenty eight. As you can see of the areas currently in use, the first four parking areas listed were all near or at capacity. In the main lot, please note that of the sixty-two spaces available, buildings twenty four through twenty six have at least sixteen regular spaces each in front of their respective buildings, while building twenty seven has only six. To repeat, the community lot currently with six informal parking spaces will be augmented with only three more regular spaces. Now, of the areas not yet near capacity and the lot at the far side of building twenty six, which also faces building twenty eight, eleven of the twenty-four spaces were filled on both observation days. This count of eleven vehicles has been quite consistent. These parked vehicles were overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly the overflow vehicles of owners in buildings twenty six and twenty seven and their visitors, aides, contractors, et cetera, who couldn't find spaces in front of the buildings. We anticipate this far side twenty six, front twenty eight lot to get much more crowded. Many future building twenty eight unit owners may well choose to park here despite the thirty-five car lot on the far side of twenty eight, because they'll prefer to walk in and out the front door, through the lobby area, near the elevator, their mailboxes, and perhaps they'll see some fellow residents with whom to have a chat. In addition, owners in first floor front units will be able to reach their cars in the far side twenty six, front twenty eight lot directly through their patio doors. Where will the overflow vehicles from building twenty six and twenty seven park then? Turning to handicap spaces, Amhad's plan requires six, uh, handicap spaces per building. Building twenty seven currently has only four handicap spaces, but, uh, Amhad's community lot will include two more. Trust Three needs more parking. Uh, we find the available parking inadequate. How many more parking spaces does Trust Three need? If it's helpful to the board, our special permit committee has estimated that if the ratio of parking spaces per unit were increased from the current one point two to one point three, we'd need thirteen more parking spaces. If the ratio were increased to one point four, we'd need thirty-one spaces, it appears. Where can more parking spaces be located? If it's helpful to the board, our special permit committee has thought of a couple of possible locations. For example, what about in front of building twenty eight, where the second set of dumpsters currently serving buildings twenty six and twenty seven is, and beyond this area in front of twenty eight to the end of the building? But then where would the second set of dumpsters be located? More on this in a bit. Concern four, lack of driver and pedestrian safety. This area of concern includes seven category safety issues. Lack of white lines on the blacktop. For example, there's no access aisle in front of the building twenty seven front door. At the bottom of this photo, the red car is parked in front of the twenty seven front door. The top of the photo shows the building twenty six access aisle in front of the twenty six front door. Access aisles are essential for owners to be picked up and dropped off safely and for EMS professionals. All other Trust Three buildings have an access aisle. Other white line issues include that there's no center line to delineate two-way traffic on Trust Three roads. And we need diagonal white lines to delineate reserved space for dumpsters at confusing extra stretches of blacktop beyond the parallel parking behind buildings twenty five and twenty seven as a path across two areas of the drive behind buildings twenty five and twenty seven, where pedestrians often cross the drive, and at the access to parking outside the building twenty six far, far side door. And we wonder why isn't the eight foot access aisle at building twenty eight in front of the front door? Lack of curb cuts, gradients, and curbing. For example, there are no curb cuts at three access, access aisles in front of twenty eight. And in the back of building twenty eight, there's no curbing to differentiate between the driveway to from the thirty-five car lot and the garage area. Also, there are no gradual gradients in front of buildings twenty seven and twenty eight from the buildings to the road. The building twenty eight driveway. Why isn't the driveway in front of this building linked to the driveway in back? Currently, the driveway in front ends at the front door. Will EMS, et cetera, will cars picking up, dropping off, unit owners be able to negotiate their actions safely and efficiently without a driveway that loops around the building? Lack of driver visibility aid and signs. At the stop sign behind building twenty five, the angle of intersection with the main Green Leaves Drive is well over ninety degrees, and some drivers can't turn their necks sufficiently to the right to watch for oncoming traffic. Also, we don't have prominent fifty mile per hour signs for three areas where pedestrians frequently cross the drive, and we, we don't have a stop sign where traffic from the back of building twenty eight will enter, enters the drive. Sidewalk safety issues include that currently, unit owners have to or will have to walk on the road between buildings twenty seven and twenty eight to get from the front of each building to the back, because there's no sidewalk on these sides of these buildings. This road walking is dangerous and will be even more so when building twenty eight is occupied. Other sidewalk issues include that building twenty eight lacks a number of sidewalks. The sidewalk in front, for example, ends at the front door. And, uh, are all the sidewalks finished with base coat and top coat? It doesn't seem so. There are cracks across many of the sidewalks. Lack of safety at dumpster areas. At the first set of dumpsters near building twenty four, you can see that the high curbing protrudes into the entrance of fall risk and that the entrance is too narrow. At the second set of dumpsters in the front of building twenty eight, uh, excuse me, what you see is one of the gates, the metal, see the metal supports for the dumpster truck entrance, which gate is swung open. The pedestrian entrance behind this gate isn't accessible because the approach to it from the parking lot isn't graded to prevent puddles from forming and isn't blacktop. The last safety issue we'll highlight is that especially during a cloudy night or a new moon, we're afraid of tripping and falling because we can't see where we're stepping in several areas in front of buildings twenty four through twenty seven and in the middle of both the top edge and the bottom of the slope. Of course, we'd want lighting that doesn't flash through the windows. Uh, but there is such lighting. Um, also, what are the lighting plans for the thirty-five car lot? Moving on from safety issues. This is the second set of dumpsters again in front of the building twenty eight front door, which currently serves buildings twenty six and twenty seven and will presumably also serve through the twenty eighth. These dumpsters lack, uh, fencing on the pedestrian entrance side. Also, would there be a better location for these dumpsters? We think this location will be unacceptably unsightly and odorous for building twenty eight unit owners and is inconsistent with the aesthetic character of the fronts of all the other condo buildings. Other important areas of concern include, in this topic of landscaping, uh, a tree in the front of building twenty twenty-five seems to be too close to the building such that roots might damage the foundation, and we wonder if there are other such trees. In the back of twenty six, landscaping was never fully restored after trench was dug for the building twenty eight electricity. Uh, we wonder, will the landscaping around building twenty eight be consistent with the rest of the condo landscaping? And building twenty eight doesn't have, uh, outdoor faucets at the front or far side of the building. In the Trust Three area, uh, beyond building twenty eight and the three thirty-five car lot, we wonder, is the emergency access road completed? And where is the boundary line for Trust Three? Uh, one of your, uh, members mentioned earlier, where is the boundary? Um, so, um, and inconsistencies, inconsistencies of stairs. The sides, side stair doors on the far side of building twenty seven are of wood, unlike the treks at the building twenty five side door stairs. Will the side door stairs at building twenty eight be of treks? Doors, the side and back doors of building twenty seven are inferior to the long lasting metal faced doors in buildings twenty four through twenty six. Are such doors at building twenty eight metal faced basements? The basement ceiling, walls, and trim in building twenty seven aren't finished in contrast to these features in the building twenty five basement. Storage units. The plan required fifty-three storage units in each of buildings twenty five and twenty seven aren't finished. And lastly, trash. There's still trash, construction material, et cetera, in buildings twenty five and twenty seven's storage rooms. I just want to say, of course, there are more details about our concerns in our submittal to you, and we thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Cummings. That was, um, exactly fifteen minutes.
What's exactly fifteen?
You timed it very well. Okay, um, who, uh, other public comments? Are there? Who else wishes to speak? I see, Ms. Williams, I see that there's a Mr. Perkins and a Ms. Posar. Mr. Perkins? Please provide us your name and address for the record.
To promote him to panelist.
Yeah. Mr. Perkins, can you hear us? You're still muted.
Uh, I was trying to do it a different way. Can you hear me now?
Yep, we sure can.
Okay.
Give us your, n- name and address for the record, sir.
I'm Clark Perkins, uh, twenty-four Green Leaves Drive, unit four four zero.
Uh, all right.
I want to thank-
Minutes.
Pardon me?
We, keep your remarks to around three minutes, please.
I'm gonna try. I want to thank Ms. Cummings for the, and our committee for the great work she's been doing. Uh, I do want to point out a couple of things, though. And, um, uh, unlike what, um, Donald Allison said and Ms. Cummings referred to, not everybody in this, uh, community is, uh, in favor of, um, not having a community building. Uh, when I bought this, um, unit, uh, two years ago, two and a half years ago, it was with the understanding there would be a community building. Anecdotally, I have spoken to several other residents who have, uh, expressed the same concern that a community ben- building would be much more beneficial to us as a whole rather than, um, building by building. Um, and so I think at the very least, although I asked this of Ms. Cummings at a committee before, to do a new survey. That one was done in two thousand and twenty-two, and it wouldn't hold up these proceedings at all to just concurrently do a new, uh, survey just to see what the current status of the thinking is, uh, among the residents. Um, it seems like a lot of the issues are over parking and car safety, over people and services. And I would like to reorient that argument a little bit more towards people and services. And I think I came within my three minute back, uh, time limit, but I want to thank you all again.
But you, you had, if you had something more, you have a minute and a half left.
I'm good. I, I got, I got what I got.
Very, thank you, Mr. Perkins. Um, I see, uh, Ms. Judy Posar has her hand up.
Hi, I'm unmuted now, I think. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, um, a little bit earlier, um, someone asked-
Your address, it, Ms. Posar.
Sure, uh, Judy Posar, twenty-four Green Leaves Drive.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, uh, so someone asked earlier about what the community rooms look like in each of the buildings. And, um, the original one in building twenty four is actually in the deed and was built as a community room. There is no bathroom. There are no bedrooms. It's just a big open space and a full kitchen. And the one in building twenty six was built pretty much the same way. But in, um, in building twenty five, it is a two-bedroom residential unit. And, um, it'll be the same, I guess, in buildings twenty seven and twenty eight. So one thing I just want to b- bring that to the board's attention. It's probably not a problem, but I think it should be noted that they are residential units. And right now, they are, um, I'd recognize by the town as residential units owned by Amhad, and they are taxed. They get property taxes. So I want to make sure as part of this converting them to, um, community rooms, that the town will recognize them as community space and no longer tax them as residential units. Does that make sense?
I understand what you're asking. Yes. I under- I understand. I don't know the answer. I ask, I understand what you're asking.
Yeah, the, the assessor a few years ago came and saw that the community, uh, room in building twenty four really is a community room, changed, like recategorized it as a community space because it's in the deed and, uh, no longer sends out tax bills for that unit, but the other ones do get tax, tax bills.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, is there anybody else who wishes to speak? I see, um, somebody named Anne, Anne Homie, is that correct? Has your hand raised? You're.
Okay, there we go. We were talking about, uh, lighting.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Anne Homie, building twenty seven, number seven one seven.
Thank you. Go ahead.
They were talking about lighting between building twenty five and twenty seven and the lighting pollution. But I'd like to point out that the only windows between twenty five and twenty seven are on the staircases. There's no pollution for apartments. The other thing I would like to point out is then in front of twenty seven, the only, uh, handicapped entrance is probably six or seven parking spaces to the south, to the north. So anybody who wants to come up to the front door, there's, there, it's just a regular curb compared to twenty, the other buildings. So, um, I think, you know, I see people in wheelchairs and on walkers, and they have to walk down maybe fifty yards before they can have access.
And what built, are you, which building is, are you saying that for?
Building twenty seven. And my other concern is that, um, when you come around the curve between twenty seven and twenty eight, and that's an exit from twenty eight, that's a speedway. I mean, that's even now, there's, and we have these community gardens, we have the pedestrians, but it's just a speedway because there are no parking spaces and there are no signs for speed limits. There's certainly no bumps. And I'm worried about that because a lot of people walk down there and a lot of, a lot of the gardens.
All right, any other comments? Thank you, Ms. Homie. I see a person named Alfred has got his hand up. We get your name and address for the record?
Alfred Vacris, twenty six Green Leaves Drive, six twenty four.
Okay.
As a relatively new resident, the question is if they offer up these units in each building as a community room, how does the deed get managed that we, unit owners have possession of that unit? Like, like what's the process that, I understand in one building that it is deeded, but in, like, how would that process work?
So the question you have is how does the deeding for the community rooms convey to the homeowners association when they take over the, the project, is that correct?
Right. Or how, how do, how do I have the right, how do I know that I have the verifiable right to that unit or access to that unit as a community room? Whereas originally, there was supposed to be this community structure that doesn't appear to be happening.
Okay.
So that's basically the question. It's like, how are we protected that our, you know, like, our interest, our, our interest is protected that we have it actually in writing of what we are allowed to control or not control?
Got it, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Anybody else wish to comment? All right, I see no other hands raised.
I think Anne still has something to say.
How we signed up because we had a community room and they still advertise that. Please.
Know that they still have.
They do. They do, please.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Ms. Homie. All right, any other comments? Mr., I see Ralph Hughes, or Hughes, Ralph Hughes.
Yes. This is Ralph Hughes, twenty seven Green Leaves Drive. And I would, turn your sound down, like to speak, particularly to the point of the community building and the community rooms. I came to this place with the understanding that there would be a central community facility, and I have looked at other such situations and my siblings and parents have experienced such things and having a central building to build community and to have a place to get together to, among other important things, elect our trustees going forward is a very important thing. And dealing with these small community rooms in each building is not going to work. Previously, there's been an annual meeting and the rooms are often filled. And we didn't have building twenty eight, we didn't have building twenty seven at those times. And people weren't interested because it was all being run by the developer. But once we are on our own, I think it's fairly important that we have a central community building and place to get together. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Any further comments? All right, I see no other hands raised at this point. Oh, one more. I see a hand from Louise.
My name is Bonnie Page, twenty five Green Leaves Drive. The question, the previous question regarding the deed to the community rooms wasn't answered. I'm wondering if Mr. Allison can address that.
He, that will be done, it's up to him to decide to do that after the comments, but we're just taking comments right now and.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
That's all right. That's a good question. The applicant has a chance to respond to the comments from the public if they so choose. Did you have anything else?
No, I'm sorry. No, no, I was just wanted an answer. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Homie, you've already spoken once.
My concern is that.
Yeah, but you've, you've already spoken once, so and used up your time.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody, anybody else who wishes to speak?
I'm not seeing any other hands.
No, I'm not either at this point. All right. So what I'm gonna propose is that we break, we take our normal seven thirty break here about seven twenty, just a little bit early. It's a quick five minute break and then we come back for the applicants. If they so choose to respond to the comments. I guess since we just have, we have no other comments and Ms. Homie wanted to speak briefly on something else that maybe she forgot to mention the first time, that can, and there's no other public comments. We can ask her to speak if she wishes briefly, and then we will move to our traditional break. Come back for the applicants. So Ms. Homie, if you wish to speak briefly, go right ahead. And then we'll, we'll take a break. Okay. Briefly. Ms. Homie? Are you there? Ms. Williams, do you find that she's? Can you bring her in? I don't see. All right. We have no comment there. We'll take a break. It's now seven twenty one. Everybody come back here by seven twenty six. And we'll see you then. Thank you.
Five minute break. I'm still on the, my picture's still on there. Just leave it there? Okay.
Is that the bathroom or anything?
No, 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 we're on a five minute break. All right. I don't know.
Or water or is that?
Everything's good.
I'm the only one left on the screen.
They come back, should be fine.
David, are we the only ones left?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Well. I, I don't know what you might want to respond to. I'll, I'll take care of the deed thing. I presume Susan will take care of, you, you know.
I don't see any, anything that I need to touch, speak to at this point.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm gonna not talk because there are people here, so I'm just gonna.
Yeah. I'm gonna stay on though.
All right, let's see if we can reconvene the panel. We'll wait here for Mr. Alfeld and Ms. Khan to sign back in. There we go. All right, we have the panel reassembled. So the next stage in the process is for the applicant to respond to the extent they wish to, to any of the comments raised in the public comment period. And again, address your comments to the chair and the board, not to any of the, the commenters specifically. You can reference their comments, but don't direct your comments to them.
I, I'm prepared to address the ownership issue of the community rooms. I'm, I don't, I'm not the project's condominium lawyer. I have a basic understanding of condominium law, but my understanding is what, there would be an amendment to the master deed filed, which would eliminate the unit as a, as a sold unit and it would become part of the common area of, of each building. So the master deed itself has a floor plan, has units, and the unit in each building, and that's what happened with twenty four. It was just pulled out of the master deed. I mean, the master deed had it as a community room, and they would just amend the master deed for the, the other buildings. It's a fairly straightforward process. If, if.
And then the rule, and if I had one question, rules of the condominium association or the rules of the developer, depending on when it was, would just, would delineate who has access to that, is that correct?
Uh, uh, my understanding, my understanding is it would be common area for each building. So that, you know, when you own a condominium, you, you also have an interest in the common areas, the right to use the common areas. And it would be the common area for building twenty five or for the residents, the unit owners in those buildings.
Right.
I don't know if Ms. Munjin wants to address any of the other issues. I, I, I would, I would address the simple issue, the sidewalk alongside buildings twenty five and twenty seven in the new site plan, the sidewalks are in. They do intend to construct sidewalks. They're, they're actually in the plan which was submitted to the board. And I, I don't know if Ms. Munjin or anybody wants to address any of the kind of practical issues of what people are talking about on the day to day life in the condominium.
So the, there was two spaces that were not striped when we were doing it because of course the special permit wasn't approved. And plus we were gonna pave, so we would be, you know, working on that area. So that's where the other two that no one's counting was in, in the plan. So that is probably why our, my count and Susan's count isn't the same. Also, the original four oh seven and six oh seven were originally one bedroom units. And what they did was just widen the doors to make it look like common space. So they are one bedrooms, they're the same square foot, every, you know, and everything as the other one bedrooms throughout. I want to say six seventy nine square feet offhand. And so that's about the community room. Advertising of the, of the community building, I, when we started to build the units in, I want to say two thousand nine, two thousand eight, people had really wanted to keep their community, their community rooms, community rooms in their buildings. So I started to hear a lot of feedback and it went to the, the at time director. And so I kind of was telling people from that time on that, that was a little up in the air because people really wanted to have a voice with the side of that factor, whether or not to have a community building. The advertisement they're talking about is, is probably on an old website that we had just upgraded the pictures and didn't realize there was a little blurb saying future construction, community building. Once I saw that was still there, I, I took it out immediately because I do know that the people really wanted to have the, the community rooms rather than the community building. So, and I think that's all on the top of my head I can think of answering right now.
All right. Any other responses from the applicant? Any further, Mr. Allison?
No, nothing from, nothing from, from me.
All right, questions from board members to the applicant before we go into a public meeting. Before we go into a public meeting, um. So let me get, I would have one quick question. Let me get this straight. So buildings twenty-seven and twenty-five face the, where the common, where the community building was supposed to be. Are there windows on the end of twenty-seven and twenty-five that face the, what will be the parking area was the, where the community rooms are going to be?
There are windows that are to the staircase. There are, there, um, at the end of each building is a deck. Um, but I think a lot of the people, like, some of people from twenty-five would go and they would complain about the lights in twenty-four. So there is this always thing about lighting. So I think that's what Dave was talking about, because a lot of people were struggling with the lighting. And then we put panels to make it work better for the residents. So I think, so I think that's what it was. It was, um, but there, there, the lights are to the staircases, but we do have N-units. And then the people across the way, you know, they don't want bright lights in the parking lot.
Okay, okay. Well, your parking lot lights shouldn't trespass all the way across the two parking areas over to the other building. But what I'm, what I'm asking is if the lighting where the parking, the new parking is supposed to be would wash onto windows that go into condominium units, or is it just into the door? Is the only window into the stair, into the door into those, the side entrance of those two buildings?
Just into the glass, just into the balconies of the two N-units. Not, it, it would not disturb the staircases, though. The, the rest are just staircases.
I, I'm not stating my question very well. Are there windows from the units that face the community, what is the, now the, the community building space, but is going to be a parking space? Are there windows from units into that area?
No.
Okay, all right. But there's decks on the back of the buildings that may, might have light washing to those.
Right, it's the front.
Okay, or the front.
Units, yes.
All right. Um.
And there's another thing, um, there is still construction going on in building twenty-eight. So like that dumpster area, that's getting a brand-new fence. It's gonna be put in differently. I think, um, during the ice storm, part of most of the wall must have went down on one of them, you know, or something. Something happened to the right side, but that's all gonna be re-enclosed and there's gonna be arborvitaries. You know, we want to plant a couple of, you know, bushes around it, make it look pretty, you know?
Um, can we pull up the, go ahead, I'm, I'm, didn't mean to cut you off, Ms. Munjin.
Right, and I mean, we were really careful on looking, you know, I know a lot of people want dumpsters, but yet they don't want them too close to their units. So, and we have to be able to get that USA hauling truck in and out on their turns. And, um, I walked the project, uh, quite a few times with Dave. Um, and I, keeping it there, even though it's a little eyesore for the people, but I think once it's done and it's done well, um, it'll look, it will look fine. And I still, you know, so I, I still, you know, I understand that it doesn't look good now, but we're a, we're a work in progress.
Can you, yeah, I was just gonna ask Ms. Williams to bring up the the site plan, and we're talking the dumpsters between which buildings?
They're talking about the one that's in front of building twenty-eight.
All right.
On the approve, yes. So right there, there's, right across the door. Um, the, and there's no sidewalk. There was never a sidewalk to the left of that building. There was, it was not on the plan. It was never, there was never a sidewalk, um, planned on that, um. And actually, people in building that are, wanna live in building twenty are really excited about that because there's a lot of green there that's not normal, normally in front of the other buildings. Building twenty-eight, I do remind people when they do come and visit that, um, for sales to remember that, um, that building twenty-eight's, you know, has this great parking lot on the side and, you know, so I talk about them using it and also that, you know, that there is the sixth handicap in the front. The, um, and building twenty-seven, where they're saying that there's parallel parking. It is, that was how the, the plan wa- always was. But, um, there is, uh, curb cuts that you can walk up, and I do understand it is a little bit of walk, but it's, it is within the two hundred feet from the entrance doors, you know, we, but, um, that's how the plan always was, so.
All right. Uh, Ms. Greenbaum, do you have a question for the applicants?
Yes, I do, because I'm confused, um, about the discrepancies between what the, some of the, uh, residents said and what management said about the, the need for the community room. I don't quite understand whether they want the community room or they don't want the, 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 the original building. And so my question is, where are they having their lodge, uh, annual meetings now? That they have the split-up spaces?
Right now, they.
People is what I'm asking.
The majority of people want the community rooms. Um, when that vote was taken, I think it was final in two thousand twenty-two. Um, so the original, um, and yes, there has been some turnover, but what I'm hearing from the residents, it's, it's maybe six people. So that wouldn't make a huge difference with the voting percent of, you know, if there was to be a vote, wouldn't make a huge difference. And, and turnovers happen, but, um, the majority do want the community, the community rooms to stay within the buildings. I, I, you know, as, as watching this place after twenty-one years and how people gather, um, that community building would probably be used for maybe ten to fifteen people. When we do have a, a meeting, we do have it on Zoom and we have it in one of the community rooms. We put a lot of chairs there. We've, um, there, you know, we get maybe an average of maybe thirty to forty people out of all the residents that actually go to the meeting. So, and then people, we do know that if we ever wanted to, there's the Marriott down the street that would, you know, we could get if we wanted to have a bigger space. There's, there's ways of, we went together.
What do you do for a bigger space, did you say?
I, there's like the Marriott, or, you know, it's like someone wanted to have a big, you know, party or something. Um, they would, you know, there's, or a large gathering of some sort. There's, there's rooms at the Marriott if we ever had to use it. But right now, the, I mean, basically, the people that use those community rooms, they're mostly small building gatherings. Um, they'll use it for the book clubs, game night. Um, it, there's never been standing room only usually. We also have the common area that is open to tables and, and we've had many potlucks in the common areas of the lobby and everything, and it works out quite well. And I think that's why people are looking at, um, having the community's room stay because it's cold, some people have a hard time carrying things over maybe, you know, so it's, it's just more convenient for them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, if there are no further questions from members of the board and no further comments from the applicant, I would move, I would entertain a motion that we move to a public meeting while keeping the public hearing open. Do I have such a motion?
It's all moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we move to a public meeting while keeping the public hearing open. Um, is there any discussion about that motion? If not, the vote occurs on the motion. The chair votes aye. Ms. Greenbaum?
Aye.
Mr. Alfeld?
Aye.
Mr. Varner?
Aye.
And Ms. Khan?
Aye.
The vote is five to nothing. Um, motion passes. We're into the public meeting portion of this consideration of this application. The public meeting is typically where the board deliberates on this application. There's not normally a time for public comment. Uh, we may seek for clarification, uh, to get, uh, public comments or comments from the applicant. It's also just, it's a chance for us to just talk about it and then to consider the conditions, the findings, and, uh, make a recommendation if we're ready to, to pass or not pass this application. So I, I would like to, kinda like to get, um, I'd like to frame the debate in, in one way, and then I'd like to understand where people are regarding this application. What we have before us is really two questions. One is should the, should green leaves be allowed to change the special permit which they were operating under to not have a community building and instead move to separate community rooms? That's the first thing. That's the first question. And the second question is to remove the requirement that they deed land of the town, which no, the town has said that they don't want. And we can look at questions regarding those two issues and things surrounding those two issues. So the question about the community, if the community building is not gonna be built, things that are directly related to that, such as, is it going to be paved? How's it going to be paved? If it's parking, how many parking spaces are going to be there? Are they handicapped accessible? Will it have the right drainage? Will it be safe lighting? Things like that we can deal with regarding the community room, a space of the community room. Um, in terms of the, the town, whether it wants to land or not, that seems to me to be a pretty straightforward question. What I do, uh, what I get from this is that there's a lot of unanswered questions, a lot of questions from unit owners about, um, how the, about some safety, about parking, about, and I don't, and those are legitimate questions that I, I'm concerned for people who live there. But beyond what is going on with that community building space, that's not for us, an issue before us right now. Um, we could not, it's possible for us to say, we're not ready to, to, uh, approve this because we want the developer to have more contact with the, with the, um, unit owners come back with whatever it is, amendments to the landscaping plan, sidewalks, whatever we want. We could say that, um, and then deny the application, but that would be because that would in some ways be beyond, that would be beyond our, our scope of, of this. Because we have to be saying that that's all related to the site of the community building. So that's, we are restricted in that regard, and we, I, I don't want to be, um, insensitive to the concerns of the unit owners. They're, would sound legitimate to me. But I think there are cases where there, where further dialogue with the developer and subsequently, when the community, when the unit owners own this property, some of these changes that they're talking about can be made. The other thing we can, that we should encourage the town is that to the extent that the, the, uh, property is not being managed in accordance with the existing plan, the approved plan, so the landscaping and the approved plan, the sidewalks, the, everything else in the approved plan, if it's not being managed in accordance with that, that the town should, um, needs to speak to the developer and the management of the, of the area and, and say that they're in violation of the special permit that they currently operate under. I am not, I cannot tell you whether I believe that that's true or not, but that is one recourse that exists for anybody is to raise a question with the town, with the building commissioner and say, you know, this is not, we don't find that it's, that the landscaping is consistent with the approved plan or the sidewalks aren't consistent with the approved plan. But regrettably, we're operating for them and with difficulty for us, we're operating on an approved plan that's twenty years ago. When I think that not only are times different, but the rigor to which ZBA looked at issues such as lighting, such as safety, such as parking, and other things are, was not as great, is not as specific as it, as we would have it today. But that's the plan, the special permit they're operating under. So, in my opinion, we have it, yeah, we, we can deal with the issues surrounding the parking area, the new parking area where the community room is going to be. And we can try to condition that. Uh, the applicant has submitted a new management plan, so we can look at that and see if that is, um, uh, app, is adequate. Um, but beyond that, we're pretty much limited to what we can do if we wish to approve this, um, this special permit at the, the quest to amend the special, the existing special permit. So with that, um, I'd like to open it up to where people are on this, where my board members are generally, and then we can proceed in, um, how we wanna, uh, how we wanna dispose of this application and, and the consideration of conditions, findings, and eventually whether we approve it or not. So I've given you my thoughts. Uh, I'd like to hear from other board members at this point. Mr. Varner?
Uh, it seems to me that there's kind of this fine line between our duties and the officiating that we go on with a contract lawyer about people coming in and buying into the condo with the understanding that there's gonna be a common space that is now no longer as advertised. Uh, I, you know, I can understand where we're involved in the conversion of the lot for the common space into a parking area, but, um, to address the probably rightful grievances of, of people who bought into the condo thinking there was also going to be this common space. I, you know, I, I think that that's, that's not something that we are designed to, to look into. I'm fairly new at this, so I, I, I don't know, but.
No, I think, I, I think you've accurately described what our responsibilities are in this case. Uh, that's right. We, we really can't get into them. You're, you're correct. I don't think we can get into the middle of whether it's a violation of a contract law. What we're looking at is whether we want to change the, um, the, the site plan and a lot of the, the removal of that building. Mr. Alfeld?
Yeah, I, I wondered what motivated the original, um, inclusion of the community building in the, in the original plan and what, uh, what the vision was for the community at that point for the, for the condo association or condo facility, um. But I stopped short in investigating that, if, if in fact we can, if that's a knowable thing. I stopped short of investigating that when I read the comments from, uh, uh, the trust owners that we got today, the, the unit three owners, that cited a survey that was done in twenty twenty-three, where seventy-eight percent of the unit owners supported. Am I reading this correctly? Uh, s- supported. Um, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm not, I'm gonna try not to read it right now. Yes, eighty-two percent supported not building the planned community building and sticking with the, you know, individual community rooms in the individual buildings. Um, so that alleviated that concern for me. I'm sure that for some people, that's a disappointment, but, but that does seem to be the broad consensus in the community. Um. I don't have any particular concerns at this point about, uh, the parking, the, the new proposed new parking or any of the pieces of it. Um, the, the piece of land that was to be deeded to the town, that's not an issue in my mind, that's fine. Um. I'm a little bit confused on, um, do we have a manage, we, I guess we just got a management plan today, which is, I really haven't had ti- time to look at it. Uh, do we have a landscaping plan? Do we need one? Do we have a stormwater management plan? Do we need one? As that, those pieces are not clear to me. Uh, I do have some comments on this proposed conditions when we get there.
All right, thank you. Uh, if I may just respond on, um, the management plan, it looks, it's pretty standard and it's far more, uh, robust than the management plan that was in effect uh, in two thousand twenty-two that was approved, which was literally, the original one was about four different points, uh, bullet points and not much more. Saying that, that, they said that they were managing it and then they gave four areas. So this is mo- far more robust than it was before and more spec- specific than it was before. So I, I see the management plan as an improvement and pretty much consistent with what I've seen in other management plans. Consistent with what I've seen in other management plans for large developments um. As well. Ah, in terms of landscape plan and stormwater plan. They were, they're not really before us. Except for the landscaping around the common buildings site that now is going to be a parking lot. There is a, there's a site plan that was approved. That site plan included landscaping. Certainly, the landscaping that was on that approved plan should be. Ma- make sure that it is um. Can maintained, that they're they're complying with that and that the. Landscaping is maintained in perpetuity. Not that it's just put in once and allowed to die. Uh, it has to be. Plants have to be replaced. But we're. What's not before us is to do a new landscape, to require a new landscaping plan. And the same thing with the stormwater management plan. So we're looking at. Again, we're looking at um pro- an approval. Of twenty twenty-five years ago. I think we'd be more um. More rigorous today than. Then they, then they just were that. It's it's not a criticism of the the process back then, but that's just the. Facts are. I think there'd be more um. A more rigorous approval process. I hope that answered you. That's my opinion regarding that. Miss Greenbaum.
My, my opinion is that I'm not against any of the three proposals. However. When I see that there were over sixteen uh homeowners there at the meeting. Um, that are concerned and I do. Want to see more definitive plans about the parking lot. I I think that we do have control over the. The landscaping to the. West of the parking lot, which seems to be a hill that's sort of washed out. I think we can make that that improved. I think we need to. Follow through on what the building inspector said about the possibility for. Uh, intimate lighting that's controlled by daylight or controlled by a timer. But the number of people here. That are concerned, I I don't think we want to. That make a decision tonight. I think that we need number one, more information and what has passed. What has proved useful in in the past. For these rather contentious. Issues is to send the. Management back to talk to the homeowners and knock heads together and try to find out what they want and how they can come. Up with a solution and then we continue the hearing and then vote on it then after maybe some of these issues. That aren't directly. Related to the parking or the community rooms, maybe they can be resolved in the interim. Does that make any kind of sense to anybody? It's worked. It worked. On Sunset Avenue, it worked on on a unit on Pine Street where the neighbor across the street was very unhappy. They went home, knocked heads together and came to a wonderful agreement. And I'm I'm rather hoping we can do something like that here. I don't feel I'm ready to vote at this point without. Some of those questions answered. The drainage on the parking lot seems to be up for grabs too. It would be like. To know a little bit more about that, whether it's gonna work or not gonna work. It looks now, the way that my lawn was washed out to the west. Uh, it's been being eroded by by drainage from that site. That's what it looks like to me, but but uh unfortunately. We didn't have any of the homeowners at the site visit, which would have been very, very useful. They could have showed us things like. Was there washed out land to the west of that proposed parking lot? So I my my suggestion, I really would like to continue it and have the. Two parties talk to each other and try to come up with some agreements.
Mister Varner. Oh, excuse me, Miss Khan, you have a chance to speak.
Okay, thank you. Looking at this uh special permits, I think the focus should be on the special permits right now. And I I appreciate the fact that. Uh, they are covering the, you know, promise for a community room as they had. Um, as the, you know, residents, eighty-two percent of the residents surveyed had. Um, also wanted. So basically, they are doing what was expected of them. Uh, via the permits they have, uh, they are asking for to be approved. So. If we prolong it, it will just slow down the process and it will affect the residents over there also. So. I think um basically we should speed up somewhat because they have been uh expecting that for a long time. Thanks.
Thank you. Mister Varner, go ahead.
I'd say a quick comment about the appearance of the. Uh, property below the the parking lot. I think that. That piece of land has been in limbo for a while. They weren't sure if they were going to build a building there or what they were going to do with it and. Uh, as a result, the uh. The landscaping was not. Uh. Implemented. I mean, there was nothing done because they didn't know what they were going to do with it. And I think that judging. Uh, judging the project on the way it looks now is is um. It is probably. A little unfair to the uh the developer because the uh. The the property is still under development and it's not like. That was what they had planned and that was the way it was going to look in. Forever. It was. Uh, just being ignored because they weren't sure what they were going to do with it yet. Just my comment on that.
Yeah. You know, I I. I would like to try to find a way to to make everybody happy too and to try to find a way for the developer to have further conversations with the unit owners. But there's really two, there's just really two things before us tonight and that's. The land of the community room and the land they give to the town. Um, we could. Say down the land that's going to be a parking lot, we could say that we want to see a uh a more robust. Um. Uh, man- landscape plan around that property to make sure that that isn't uh eroded away by uh stormwater. Uh, we, it seems to me that the. It looked like the stormwater management plan said that that was suffi- those drains were sufficient, so we have to make sure that they would have to make sure that the. Parking lot. The new parking lot flows into the. The two catch basins and doesn't uh erode, so that would, you do that by grading and by. Um, having, making sure that that's the water flows into those drains and doesn't drain out the backside and and erode the the hillside there. That could all be done and you could have um landscaping. There that would hold, that would maintain the hillside, so it wouldn't um. Wouldn't erode. So that could all be done and we could require that and set up conditions and that they come back to us. With a um, a more, a better landscape plan and we could observe it in a public meeting or we could leave it up to the building commissioner to approve it. Those are two options to deal with the landscaping around that. Building eventually because, or around that land because I think you're right. Um, it wasn't being used in the manner in which they intended it to be used for twenty years and. In the land, I I'm not sure that the landscaping is consistent with the landscape plan that they, that was approved twenty years ago. As it is. And we can also say that the lighting on the. That. That does illuminate the new parking area, has to be downcast and dark sky compliant and not wash onto other. Other um. Other buildings, but there's no windows there. Uh, so that. Makes that less of an issue. We could. I mean, I think it's conceivable that we could address the issue of the stairs on the one building that seemed to be. Less safe for elderly people to walk, I mean, the the it's too wide, they can't grip both sides. The stairs look like they're uh um. Are eroding away themselves. The wood looks like it's bad. We heard about that. We could require. That there be better access to that area from the, to the parking, to the. New parking area from that building. But I think beyond that, we're stretching our. Um, jurisdiction. So I think we could do those things. Um, I don't know how, what leverage we have to to force greater um cooperation between the. Land, the developer and the unit owner, the unit owners. They're eventually going to own this place, the land. They're going to be the people that own the land and they're going to have to decide what they want to do with parking and and how they want to manage that property. As owners of the con- condominium owners and not the developer. And at that, at that point, that will be their opportunity to make some of the changes that I think they rightfully asked. And I think that if the developer would work with them prior to the change of ownership, it'd be a really good thing. But I don't know how we leverage ourselves into that and even our business to leverage ourselves into that. In that discussion. So that's kind of where I'm coming from. I come from, when I come down to this, I think let's deal with the. Problems that directly result from the parking lot, the new parking lot. Let's make sure that that's safe. Let's make sure it drains correctly. Let's make sure that it's lit safely. Let's make sure that people can get in and out of it, get to it safely. Those are all legitimate concerns. Um. But the other concerns that the, that the homeowner, the unit owners have about the lack of parking. And other things really are beyond our our purview right now and I just don't, I'm not prepared to, I I can agree with them. I think it looks like, it looks really um. Difficult to see how there's sufficient parking on that site for all these units. Right now, I at one point, two. Spaces per unit doesn't seem enough, especially for. Uh, a place where you have um not only delivery trucks, which what we didn't have twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago, but you also have. Aids and visitors and everything else coming in and. And I don't know where you put more parking if you, e- even if it was within our jurisdiction tonight to say that. That it's uh, they, we need more parking. I, I think that's. Going to be a question for the existing developer and a question for the. Unit owners when they eventually own this, that property. Outright after the trend, after the last sale was made in the last building. So that's kind of where I come from. And so Hilda, I'm not sure that that we're going to be in a position to force that further discussion.
That's okay. I have another idea. Which we've also you've done in the past and that is. To allow the permit with a lot of conditions, one of them being that. There are no sales. That or that they can't sell the first building or um. They don't get an occupancy permit for the new building. Until certain conditions are fulfilled. And that's that we see, we see. At a public meeting and approval of the. The safety of the lighting on the parking lot and if we have concerns about the drainage, whatever, whatever the issues that are wide open that are concerned can be. Condition on the. The uh aw- awarding of an occupancy permit. Or for our further sales. They have to buy somehow before they can sell something.
Now, that, that, that's a very good idea. That's a, yeah, a good idea to try to do that for some of the conditions that they rely that. No occupancy permit can be granted until. Uh, you know, there's. Safety regarding the the new parking area, whatever it is.
Yeah, the question of they want, I don't know, you you own a condo, I I. Don't know quite how it works, whether you would make a down payment on it, but you couldn't occupy it. And uh. That's something, whether we have to, I've seen both wording, the occupancy permit for for. People that are on um. I can't remember the word, like the people that owned. The the. Can't remember what the phrase is, but if you own it outright like a house. You can say things like occupancy permit, but but how it would work with with the condo, I don't remember the language.
Yeah, well, we still have to get an occupancy permit for the building and and they don't have that yet, so that would. That wouldn't happen until it's substantially complete, I think. Just since I, I mean, I, I think that's the case, an occupancy permit wouldn't be granted until there's. Further, towards further construction and and a safety. Examination and and a few other things, right?
Would would it be that they would come back to us? Well, I would.
We could choose it, choose to do that, or we could have it go to the building commissioner. So there's.
I I think I would rather sue. I would rather not, but it's. That I've got my name on something that I feel happy about.
All right. Okay. Um. Any other comments? It sounds to me like. There's a desire to move forward. And try and further condition this amongst the board members. That seems to be a consensus and so um. If you look at the project applicant, the most recent project application report. There's a series of um, conditions. That were proposed as conditions of approval. And. Talking with the staff earlier today. Um. There's a couple of things that. The first off, the first thing I want to say is that. The only two old conditions that were, that are asked to be removed are six. And or eight, excuse me, eight and sixteen. I think that's the right, correct number. Yep, eight and sixteen. All right, those are the two that are asked to be removed. The rest of them. That's not before us, the rest of them are not asked to be removed. And so those conditions remain. As part of the exist, the original special permit. We can add additional. Additional uh, conditions. So um, because of the additional parking. The first one is, uh, the, well, the first. Proposed condition that the, is in the project application report. Would just state the number of units. That are now going to be available for occupancy, which is different than in the original document, because now we have community rooms and we don't have. Um. All, they're not all occupied, occupied. Residences. So the number of. Bedroom uh, total units changes. And I think the staff has the correct numbers before you in proposed condition number one. Which is there are. Um, forty-four one bedroom, one twenty-four two bedroom, twenty-three bedrooms and five community rooms. And I want to. Confirm that with the applicant, that those are the correct numbers.
I'm sorry. I believe that to be the, that that to be the case.
Okay. So that's the first condition. Um, I think this. And then the assisted living care facility contains ninety-eight units, not including a community room. This is, that's that other building that's not even contemplated to be built yet. But it's from the existing, that's what the existing conditions had, correct?
Yes.
So. I'm not sure that we need this assisted living condition because it's already in the existing conditions of the special permit from two thousand and four.
And double check that.
Well, if you find that that's wrong.
No, you're you're right. Uh, Mr. Judge, it it is in the original permit. The assisted living care facility shall contain ninety-eight units.
So we don't need that because it's already there, but we do need the change in in the. The units because of the community rooms. If we approve this. Second. I want to make sure that we've got the right number of parking uh, spaces. So the new parking spaces, there shall be a total of. I think the number that I was given was two hundred and thirty-two parking spaces. Miss Mangian, is that correct?
Yes, it's, it's what he had plus eleven. I want to say. So I think it was twenty-one, so then minus one would be a hundred and thirty. I'm sorry, um.
Two hundred and thirty-two.
Two hundred and thirty-two, yes.
So two hundred and thirty-two spark parking spaces. So the second amendment, the second condition. Shall be, there should be two hundred and thirty-two parking spaces. And we don't, in the, just the statements, there'll be a. Uh, two hundred and thirty-two parking spaces on the property, right?
Yes.
So that's, so that's all we need to state for that second condition, second new condition. The third condition listed here. Um, I don't think we need to have, a new site plan for parking shall be presented approval by the board. The public meetings that prior to the sale of the first unit, that was. Twenty years ago, so that isn't needed. The property shall be managed in accordance with the updated management plan as presented to the board on March thirteenth. That is needed. And any change to the management plans will be submitted to the board for approval at a public meeting. And so what that means is that there's, if there's a significant change to the management plan, either now, either now. Excuse me, or when it is converted, it ownership rever- reverts to the unit owners. That will be um, have to come to us. At before the uh, in a public meeting. Mr. Al- Alfeld.
I'm just going to back you up a little bit here. So what we're doing is just listing new conditions or changes to the old conditions. We don't, we don't have to repeat conditions. That's what I'm.
That's exactly right. Because this is an amendment to the existing special permit. So that what's there. Unless we have to change it or add to it, remains.
I have a concern about the wording of number one, but we can go back to that if you want to.
Well, let's do it. Let's, let's talk about it right now. Yep.
Okay, so the, the second sentence doesn't quite make sense. I think it's. The total number of bedrooms in all buildings, not in each building.
Yep. You're right.
And the second thing is, do we need to say what a community room is? Uh, it is, it, and Mr. Allison suggested, it is a unit which has been designated as community space. I thought that was pretty good language. So it's thirty-eight residential units in each of the buildings and one unit. That is designated as community space.
Okay.
Just so it's clear that it's a unit that is, you know, the commu- the community thing is a unit equivalent to the other residential units. I also, um, while you're on that, um, number one, uh. I want to bring to the, um. Board's attention that not, uh, each of the five buildings doesn't have thirty-eight units. Building twenty-five only has thirty-six units and a community room.
The number of units and the number of buildings shall be as follows, building twenty-five, so.
So buildings twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight have thirty-eight units each and a community. Space, um, and, but building twenty-five. Only has thirty-six units and a community space.
Okay, we can. Have the staff correct that, uh, the right language in terms of the. Yeah, I think what you'd say is buildings twenty-one, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight each have thirty-eight units. Building twenty-five has thirty-six units. All buildings will have one unit designated as community space. That's how that could be stated. You, you got that, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Good. Alright, uh, that's a good catch, Mr. Alfeld, thank you. So we've got, we've, we deleted three, what's now listed as four, I think should remain there. Operating, this operating plans in the form of copies of recorded condominium documents, it is in the, um, old. Condition, so we don't need to, to put that in. Developments of greenleaf property shall be in accordance with the construction schedule approved on the, on the board on March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Any change to approved construction schedule shall be submitted to the board for approval at a public meeting. The construction schedule had it completed by January thirtieth, so it's already outdated.
Yeah.
And, yep, so we have to change that. But here's how, my suggestion is as follows. The, the development of the greenleaf property shall be in accordance with the construction schedule submitted to the building commissioner. Prior to granting any occupancy permit. So. I think it makes sense instead of us saying, you gotta have this done in three months, and then they don't, they come back, they gotta have it. We have to reconsider it. Um, I, I think the right way to do this is to say that the construction schedule has to be committed, submitted to the building commissioner. And the leverage there to make sure it gets done and it's accurate, that they don't have a, they don't have a construct, a occupancy permit, uh, until they do that. Alright.
That does make some sense.
Why?
Let him know, I have to squish it bigger so I can see it. Um, because. You're asking for a development schedule which comes before a certificate of occupancy, which comes after it's all done. You're asking for. I can't read, it keeps squishing into me. The development shall be in accordance with the construction schedule, which should be submitted before they start.
And then. Well, they've already started, I mean, but they've started, they, I mean, this is, they've started their building. Go ahead, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, Ms.
I don't know what that, 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 that doesn't mean anything to me.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Right. Well, I, I understand, but I, but they need to have a construction schedule. The construction schedule they currently have, they've already missed. So you need to have some way for them to make sure to, to provide a construction schedule to the town.
Yeah, but you don't want it to wait until they ask for an occupancy permit. You want them to get the thing done so that they can get the occupancy permit. That's what I'm trying to say.
That's true, that's true, but I don't know of another, maybe, is there anybody?
Give them a date, like by May one, two thousand twenty-five. They can come up with the schedule by May, um, and come back. To the building, but, but I would, I would put a date on there rather than that. And if you want it, if, if they don't have, they're not complying with the one now, then give them two months to do it, like May one. That's six weeks. They ought to be able to give you a schedule in two days. But if you want to give them April fifteenth, they want a date rather than a. A condition that, that, the occupancy permit, because that's not going to solve the problem.
Mr. Allison, can you get a occupants, can you get a construction plan to us in two weeks?
Uh, ye- yes, I can. I mean, I just, I, I want to qualify this by saying, the issue isn't. Us trying to move forward, it's subcontractors, you know. It, it's all of the problems you run into when you're trying to construct a building, whether this cut subcontractor comes. Before that subcontractor comes. And so the schedule we submitted was, was really the best, um. Estimate that Ms. Mungin could, could make at the time, um, but I certainly get you a revised schedule within two weeks. Um, and I'll put my head together with Ms. Mungin and find out, I mean, there's not a whole lot left to complete on that building. There's, there's very little to complete on that building. And so I, I can do that within a couple of weeks, get you a schedule.
Alright, we're going to have a. Uh, let's change, I think you have a good suggestion, Miss Greenbaum. I didn't think of a date as opposed to some other kind of break, some kind of action by the. That the board would have to take, or that the building commissioner would have to take. So, um, let's, it's the thirteenth now, um. Can you have something by April second?
Yes.
Alright, so approved, submitted to the building commissioner by April second. I don't think we need to look at that in the screen bottom. I think it just.
No, no, just, but the, the data is a much better idea than a.
Yep, I agree. I think that's a really good suggestion.
Is this, is this prior to the issuance of the special permit or regardless?
No, subsequent to the issue of the, the special permit.
Okay, so April second.
Yeah, the, one of the things is this waiting period and all that, but, so would April second be enforced? Um, or enforceable? If the permit.
If we approve the permit today, they've got twenty days to, yeah.
It, but is it when it's approved or when we sign it and when it's filed? Um.
But it's not, it's not, it's not in effect until it's filed and the appeal period goes.
So I'm just wondering if maybe we ought to take a different.
You know, I don't think we have to, we should, I don't think we need to go through all this. I think what frankly, we'll say to them, get it done by, by April second. They said they can do it. If they can't get it done by April second, they're in violation of the special permit. It's that simple. So. I think that we should just leave it there, give them a date.
Okay, okay.
Possible and, and not try to, otherwise we're looking at, um, June before we, they have to submit it. Alright, so April second it is. Next, the parking plan shall show changes in grading and surface drainage if there are proposed changes in addition to paved areas. But that, I think that we need that so that the drainage goes into the, into the catch basins. Now, um, there isn't a landscaping plan approved on March thirteenth, but landscaping, so, so this is the area. Where we can require that there be a landscaping plan, um, submitted. We could either, you know, we could require a landscaping plan around the new, um, the new parking area. And we can require that that landscaping plan come back to us for approval at a public meeting. And not just leave it up to the business, the building commissioner. It's up to our, it's up to our choice. We have three options. One, we can delay the approval for this special permit until they come up with a landscaping plan. Two, we can tell them, we can say that you have to come up with a landscaping plan and we have to prove it at a public meeting. Or three, we can give it, uh, allow the approval to be with the building commissioner. I would think that we have, it would, might be my preference that we use the second option. And say, come back to, to us at another public meeting with a landscaping plan for the new parking area. And that, I would also say a lighting plan, I would add a lighting plan there as well. Or like, not, not a pure, not a full study, but just a better lighting plan for that area. What do members think of that? Thumbs up, thumbs down?
Safety, we, the, well, the, we're concerned with the safety of the people in the parking lot. And, and a, a landscaping that will hold the. Um, soil to the west of the parking lot.
So I guess here's what I'd say, uh, how I, how I, uh, state this. Landscaping shall be called, in, installed in accordance with the landscaping of plan to be sub- submitted to the, um. Uh, landscaping plan around the new parking area to be submitted to the board at a public meeting. Secondly, lighting and safety of the stairs at the, uh, a reconstruction of the stairs at that one building. That the tenants, and, or not tenants, that the unit owners talked about should also be included in this. I think.
Yeah.
And, so I think we can say that that had, all those have to be back to us. Um, for us to approve at a public meeting.
Did you, I can't see because the print is too small. Did you put in stabilization of the hill to the west of the parking lot as part of that landscaping?
You know, I don't think we have to be that specific because I think they know exactly what we're looking for, is that exact stabilization. Um, so I think the way to do this is to require a landscaping plan to be submitted to us. Lighting for the, for the parking area and a reconstruction of the steps that were of concern. I think it's on building, I think that's building twenty-seven, but I'm, I, my notes aren't clear on that because. I think it's building twenty-seven. Yeah, building twenty-seven. Mr. Alfeld?
Yeah, you may have already answered this, but I, do we need to, to delineate what the area of, of the landscaping plan is? And I'm thinking from the, uh, road that is between buildings, uh. The, the bulk of the buildings, twenty-four through twenty-eight, between that road and the lower road. And then between the two buildings, twenty-five and twenty-seven, that's kind of the area that we're talking about, that is within the. Um. Area of interest for the new parking lot.
You know what I would say is that if we get too specific with this stuff, um, it's just hard to write. But I think.
Okay.
I think the applicant knows that we're concerned about the drainage, we're concerned about the lighting, we're concerned about the stairways. And we're concerned about the, um, um, that, that it gives. That's what we're concerned about. And so I think they know to come back to us with a complete landscaping plan for that area. And like, and so, and I'm, I'm sure they'll operate in good faith and, and address the questions that we have.
Can I, can I ask a question? When, when you asked that in front of a, a public meeting? I mean, does that mean we have to wait in line to schedule coming to a public meeting, or is it something that? We just, you know, let the planning board know and it gets submitted to you, um, at, at a subsequent meeting? I mean, is it a hearing or a meeting or just?
Oh, it's a public meeting, which is less than a public hearing. It's a public meeting, so that's what we're in now. It's just, it comes before us. It typically doesn't take as long to schedule a public meeting, especially if it's a follow-up for something else. And if it doesn't take a long time, if it's a robust, uh, fulsome, landscape lighting and. Uh, reconstruction plan that we're gonna, that we're gonna look at and say this is great, then it can get scheduled pretty quickly.
Okay, that's, that was my question, thanks.
So the better the plan, the quicker it can possibly be scheduled.
I got it.
That's another incentive to do it well. Alright.
Sure.
Um, exterior light signs and lighting shall be presented to the board for approval at a public meeting. I think that's, isn't that a carryover from the old one? As well, Ms. Williams, so that one we don't need. So number, what's listed as number nine, we don't need. Exterior lighting shall be downcast and shall not shine on adjacent properties, um. I don't know that that was in the old.
It is, it's a carryover. I've got it on the screen, Steve, um, Chair Judge, so that you don't have to look at the.
You got it on the screen?
It is on the screen.
I'm looking at my paper.
Yes.
I'm just, I'm old school, guys, and I, I like paper, um, alright. And then, so that, that's already there. Um, and plans for assistance shall be submitted to the board for approval at a public meeting. Again, this is for. That's already, that's, it's already there, right?
Yes.
Yep, so the number eleven isn't needed.
Yeah, what about the photometric plan? You said you didn't want to do that.
It's, it's in there, it's number nine.
Number. Shall be. Exterior signs and lighting shall be presented to the board for approval at a public meeting prior to the installation.
No, the one above that, number nine.
This one.
You said, you said you weren't gonna, you, you weren't gonna require a photometric plan.
Well, I, I, you know, I don't know that we need a full-fledged photometric plan because there's no windows there. Miss Greenbaum, there's no windows. But they do need, yeah, what they do need is a, a lighting, I would say a lighting plan shall be submitted that provides for. Safe use of the, of the parking area.
You wanna, I, I thought you saw, had caught that above, but alright, you can see if you caught it. I like that wording, but I thought you already covered it, so.
Yep.
So, um, staff can work that out, if it's all.
Yeah, and I, I, I'm not expecting that we get foot candles, all that. I, I expect. Uh, you know, uh. Well, whatever, whatever it is, whatever the term of art is, is what should be in there.
Yeah, but I thought we talked about it before, so we may want to combine those two things. When you talked about the drainage and the landscaping, I thought the lighting was in with that one. But anyway, you worked it out afterwards.
There now, yep. Alright.
Okay, Chair Judge, does this look okay?
Yeah, I'm just reading through it right now.
Okay.
Number of units. Alright, number is right. There should be a total of thirty-two, that's right. Property shall be managed in accordance with the updated management plans presented on board on any changes, right? Development agreements shall be in accordance with the construction schedule submitted to the building commissioner by April second, alright? New parking plan shall show changes in grading and surface drainage if there are proposed changes or additional, or additions to paved areas. Alright, landscaping shall be installed in accordance with the landscaping plan to be approved at a public meeting. Revisions to the staircase for building twenty-seven shall be included in this plan and approved at a public meeting. The lighting plan for safe. Use of the parking area should be submitted and approved by the board at a public meeting. Are there any other conditions that people wish to add? Mr. Al- Alfeld?
Yep, uh, uh, since we're just amending, do we need to explicitly say that the old. Uh, conditions eight and sixteen no longer apply?
We shouldn't have to, but we're going to. We shouldn't have to, but we're going to. Yes, yeah, we shouldn't have to, but we're going to. We're going to say that the, um. The, uh, if the other, the existing conditions apply unless amended to the extent that they're not amended by. This special permit amendment. Yep.
Except for numbers eight and sixteen.
So numbers eight and sixteen, right?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Yep.
Oh. Did we want to say something about the, the, um. That we put in there about the occupancy permit?
No, because we, we didn't do the occupancy permit because you, you had a better idea of a date.
No, not that, that had to do with the construction schedule.
Yep.
Um. The, the, the lens. What do we want to say? To make sure everything gets done and gets done right, that, that, that they can't get an occupancy permit until. All this stuff is approved by us.
I'm.
Huh?
I think that we could say that for the landscaping, the.
The parking lot stuff.
Yeah, the seven, eight, and nine, we could say must be done before. The building commissioner can grant occupancy. I would be happy with that. I don't think there's be any, is there any objections from any other members on that? I mean, I think that they've got to do that, but.
Certificate of occupancy, I think it's called.
Yep. All right. Any other questions regarding? Conditions? Okay. I'm gonna just go.
Where do we, of the, the business about the, the land? And the community rooms, that's all part of, that, that's not a condition, that's part of the permit, right?
Well, there's, we, we have it in the, we have it in the conditions and it's all, and it's also part of the request, the permit that.
That the permit says that we, the, the, the land will belong, et cetera.
Right.
That's part of the narrative is what I'm trying to spit out.
It is.
Okay.
I'm just checking my notes to see if there's anything else that we need to say.
And we're specifically allowing the, uh, the community rooms in the narrative.
Right.
Okay.
The last, just the other thing is that we. You change your management plan to include the right trash person. And we submit it, just send it to us. That's easy to do, right?
I'll do it tomorrow.
Yeah. All right. I have no other. Conditions. If, if. There are no other to conditions suggested. I like to vote on the conditions first. I think having the conditions in place of what allows us to make the findings we're required to make. If we wish to approve this special, the amendment to special permit application. So that I would entertain a motion to include conditions as, um. Are on the screen as we develop them today. Do I have such a motion?
I approve it.
Yep, we've got to move. And, and so Miss Khan moves, Miss Greenbaum seconds.
Yes.
Any discuss? Any discussion on the motion? If not, the vote occurs on the motion to approve the conditions as drafted. The chair votes aye. Miss Khan?
Aye.
Mr. Varner?
Aye.
Miss Greenbaum?
Aye.
Mr. Alfeld?
Aye.
Vote is five to nothing, the conditions are approved. Uh, now we move to, um, findings that we have to make. Um. First is it's a non-conforming lot in uses, the section nine point two. Um. Applies here, and what we have to find is first that. Uh, that the. We are allowed, that you, you can change an existing non-conforming building or structure. Um, or you can enlarge it, alter it, or reconstruct it so as increase its non-conformity under. This bylaw for the purposes of this, the structural shall not change, excuse me. Except as here, a non-conforming building or structure shall not be structurally altered, enlarged, nor reconstructed. So as to increase its non-conformity under this bylaw. The request to remove condition eight, eight and sixteen does not, um. Does not increase its non-conformity. Indeed, it's even more conforming because it's all of. All residential buildings now and not a separate building. The staff finds that requirements, uh, let's, let's see that this. Nine point two zero.
Nine point two two.
In nine point two oh one. Um, they have been, that these conditions have been met, sections three point three, nine point two two, this is where it says. That its effect on the neighborhood on the property in the vicinity is not substantially different in character than it was before. I don't think that this approval creates. But additional, um.
Non-conformity.
Well, not even not a non-conformity, but its effect on the neighborhood is not, um, more destructive than before.
Not true.
Yep. I agree with that. Um, that's the first set of findings. The second set of findings is Article ten. Special, uh, what we always have to do. So the first is ten point three eight zero and ten point three eight one. It's located in a neighborhood. I think it meets these requirements, suitably located in a neighborhood. Ten point three eight two, ten point three eight three, three eight five, and three eight seven deals with, this deals with, um. Um, disruption for net neighbors, um, water, noise, odor, dust, vibrations, lights of visually offensive structures and site features. And the proposal provides convenient safe vehicular traffic and movement within the site. I think through the conditions that we've imposed, we've prevented the. Um. Lights and other visual obstructive features. I don't think that this creates, um, intrusion into or nuisances to the. Neighbors and neighboring, neighboring structures in the area. Ten point three. Go ahead, there's somebody who has a question? Nope. Ten point three eight four, adequate, appropriate facilities would be provided for the operation of the proposed area. Think that's, it does, it's not changed. Ten point three eight six ensures that the performance of the parking sign and regulations. Um. Uh, it's, you know, I. The existing special permit is, had two hundred and twenty nine spaces, we're adding an additional eleven spaces. So if anything, it's. It's, um, is more, it's providing more parking and there's no sign changes. Ten, ten point three eight seven. Sa- safe and convenient vehicular trap and pedestrian movement within the site. Meets this, we think the proposal meets this requirement and the staff does not believe that a traffic report is required. Ten point three eight eight, the proposal ensures adequate space. Uh, for off-street loading and parking. And then loading of vehicles and products, um. We, I think this meets the requirements of the section, although it's not ideal, but it does meet the requirements of the section. The proposal provides adequate methods of disposal or storage of sewage. Um, that's provided in the management plan of March thirteenth, ten point three nine zero. Uh, flood hazards, that doesn't apply, ten point three nine. One, uh, unique or important historic or scenic features. Um, the changes in this that we're making, uh, makes this, does not apply. Ten point three nine two, adequate landscaping and screening of adjacent residential uses provision of trees. Et cetera, et cetera. I think the additional, um, landscaping of the areas on which we have, we are. Charged with looking at in this, um, on this special permit amendment. Uh, we've dealt with that, and I think the conditions will require that to. Uh, be the case. Ten point three nine three, the proposal provides protection for adjacent properties by minimizing intrusion of lighting again. For the areas in which we are currently having, within our jurisdiction on this amendment. Um, the lighting plan will do that. Ten point three nine four. Uh, avoids to accent feasible impact on steep slopes, floodplain, scenic views, grades, et cetera. Um, I don't, section applies, but to the extent that it might, the landscape plan on the area that we're talking about talks about. Will deal with, uh, any kind of erosion from that slope behind the parking area. Ten point three nine five, proposal does not create disharmony with respect to the train use scale. And quite frankly, there's no change to that at all. This does not apply. Ten point three nine six deals with screening for storage areas. Um, they have represented that there's additional storage. Areas and the storage areas would be screened. Um, so I don't think this is, um, I, I think we, they've meant that. Ten point three nine seven, the proposal provides adequate recreational facilities, open space and amenities for proposed use. Actually, the. Uh, community rooms are additional amenities. So that's met ten point three nine eight, proposals in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this bylaw and the goals of the master plan. That seeks to complete construction and adds an additional thirty eight units of housing. So I think it meets that. Are there any questions about the findings that I've just run through? If not, are any questions about the findings? If not, I entertain a motion that we approve the findings as. Contained in the, um. Draft project application report and as we've straight, uh, recited them tonight.
So I'm.
It's moved as a second.
Nice, yeah.
Yep, moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? On the motion? If not, the vote occurs on the motion to approve the findings. As chair votes aye, Mr. Alfeld?
Aye.
Miss Greenbaum?
Aye.
Mr. Varner?
Aye.
Miss Khan?
Aye.
All right, motion carries five to nothing, the findings are approved. The last. Um. Action on this matter is to, is to approve the request to amend FY twenty. FY two thousand four dash forty seven, special permit to remove the conditions eight and sixteen. In addition to revising the site plans to reflect the additional community room and buildings twenty four through twenty eight. Constructing new parking area, deleting requirements to deed land and easement to the town under sections nine point two two and ten point three three. As conditions, uh, with conditions, excuse me, with conditions. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
We've got it, we've got it running here with the Greenbaum and Khan move and second. Any discussion on the motion?
No.
All right. Chair votes aye on the motion. Mr. Alfeld?
Aye.
Miss Greenbaum?
Aye.
Mr. Varner?
Aye.
Miss Khan?
Aye.
Motion is care, motion, vote is five to nothing, the motion carries. Um, it's, the, uh, um, request to amend the special permit. Is approved with, to amend a special permit with conditions is approved. And the last motion is to close the hearing on. Um. Special permit request or ZBA request. Geez, I need to see, it's to close the hearing on, the public hearing on ZBA FY twenty twenty five dash thirteen.
So moved. Second.
Good, all right, we've kept it up. Uh, any discussion? No discussion, chair votes aye. Miss Khan?
Aye.
Mr. Varner?
Aye.
Miss Greenbaum?
Aye.
Mr. Alfeld?
Aye.
To, vote is five to nothing to close the hearing, the public hearing on this matter. All right, gentlemen, um, we're looking forward to receiving. Landscape and lighting and, and safety plan for the, and, and safe plan for the new parking area. I encourage you to talk as much as possible with the unit owners and work with them because there were some real concerns there that I think are legitimate, but. Just were not within our purview at this time. So congratulations, good luck. I hope you get it done soon and you have the, uh. Construction people to get it done.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Have a good night.
Okay, good night.
Good night. Okay, next order of business is ZBA FY twenty twenty five dash eighteen. A request to amend the FY twenty twenty four eleven dash eleven variance for modification of conditions one and two. To raise the building slightly so that the maximum height when measured from grade will be fifty nine and a half feet. For property located at four twenty two Amity Street, map thirteen B parcels eighteen, twenty seven, twenty eight, and fifty four. In the BL limited business zoning districts. On this panel would be myself, Mr. Henry. Mr. Alfeld, Miss Greenbaum, and Miss Khan. Um, submissions have been included the, from the applicant, February sixth. Uh, four twenty two Amity Street, um, narrative. Four twenty two Amity Street application fee, four twenty two Amity Street application, four twenty two Amity Street site plan. For, uh, ZBA FY twenty, for twenty twenty four dash eleven variance decision. ZBA FY twenty twenty five dash sixteen, Amity Street. Um, app, application. Submitted on, on March fourth, draft U by, U drive Amherst canopy. Draft U by, U drive Amherst rooftop, that's, that assumes that solar documents. And then submitted on March tenth, four twenty two Amity Street, SWR. Zero one dash two oh two five, and. Miss Williams, I do not know what that is, so I can't characterize that.
I'm sorry, hold on one second. Let me look at the list. That is the solar report, the, I'm sorry, the stormwater report.
Stormwater, that's our done, the stormwater report, that makes sense, thank you. All right, we, uh, there was no staff submissions and there was no public comments, uh, public submissions. Um, site visit was conducted on. March eleventh, I thought, was it Monday or? Uh, was it the tenth, Monday, March? We conducted the site visit. At that site visit, we observed where the building was, we observed the, um, how the. The condition of the, of the, uh. The land around where the site is going to be. We talked briefly with the applicant regarding the, the hardship imposed. Or created by the high water tables. We looked, we observed that the. Footprint of the building was changed from what it was to, to be a single building now. We discussed how the. There was, um, five, I think, five stories and the need, and we discussed the need for additional, um. Inches, I think, to, um. The reason for it was for the, um, building. Uh, heating and cooling systems and other things that need to be, uh, increase the height would be on the roof. Uh, and the need for the height. So I think those are, and I think that was the. Most of what we talked about at the site visit. Miss Greenbaum, is there anything else that we discussed at the site?
I wanted to say, I think you need to take attendance again because we have a different. Uh, panel here than you announced, Miss. Miss Khan isn't here, so I think you, I don't know whether it's necessary.
Well, I, I, I can't take attendance again, but we have, in attendance, I will note that the chair, Mr. Henry, Mr. Alfeld, and Miss Greenbaum. Are all in attendance. Miss Khan is on this panel, but she has stepped off, so.
Trying to get her back.
If you can get her back, that's great, but we can, thank you for that. We can proceed though, because we, I'll, I'll note their presence.
Okay.
Mr. Alfeld, did I, yep, I bet you're gonna ask about, you're gonna comment on the solar.
No, no, I, that would be fun to do, but I, I want to offer a disclosure, if, if this is the right time to do this. Okay, so I just wanted to note that in February of twenty twenty four, I wrote a letter. To the ZBA in support of the application, the first application for this project. I was not a member of the ZBA at the time. I am not in a butter and I have no financial interest in the project. I do believe I can make an impartial judgment about the request before us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Alfeld.
Okay.
And. You did remind me that we did also discuss the potential for solar, um. Panels on the roof and. And that, that's still up in the air, but that was discussed. So that's, that's good. Um. I think there's nothing else to relay for the site visit. We've already gone through submissions, um, so who is representing the applicant at this late hour?
That'll be me, Mr. Chair.
On Thursday night. All right, Mr. Brady.
Yeah, let's, I'll, let's, let's go right through this, um.
I need your name and address.
Of course, of course, for the record, Tom Brady. Of course, of course, for the record, Tom Reedy, Attorney with Bacon Wilson out of Amherst, uh, here on behalf of U Drive Amity. Six Southeast Street, uh, in Amherst. Um, I guess maybe one point of order. To start, if Ms. Khan does not come back, I don't know if Mr. Varner could vote on this, we haven't had any hearings yet. Um, from my perspective, I don't see why not, if he'd be so inclined. It's a, it's a variance, uh, I need four members, if I only have four members, so be it, but if I could have five and. And have some room for error, then then that'd be good on my part, so.
Well, she was assigned to the, to the panel, I think we, I know you don't object to it, but. Her, she was assigned and while I, I really do like Mr. Varner's input on things. Um, I'm not gonna change the panel at the last minute and.
I'm just saying that she's not here.
I know she's not, but the panel that was assigned included her and. I. I understand your desire for a safety margin, um, and I like Mr. Varner's approach on things and his studious nature, but. Mr. Varner's wasn't on the panel that was approved, so. Up steps, so we're gonna go ahead on with four, with four members and I, and I hope you can get Ms. Khan back on, Ms. Williams, because she's supposed to be on the panel. I understand your request. Yes, Mr. Henry.
So Mr. Chair, to, to be fair to Attorney Reedy, um. I, I had the chance to read everything while listening to the previous panel and I have some concerns and. Um, when we did this in twenty twenty four, we allowed the variance. Because the developer stated to not do that would cost me about eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, and so the project was changed from two buildings to now one building. And what I do understand, um, on its face, the reason for that. Um, I, I am a hundred percent that I'm sold, so to be fair to Attorney Reedy. I think it makes, um, we would need somebody else, um, just to give him that margin that he describes.
Oh, well. Uh, you know, I just made a. I just made a ruling on keeping the panel as it was proposed. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna shift the panel makeup based on the perceived outcome. You know, you, you're stated up as, it sounds like you stated concern and perhaps opposition to the, to the project and that it would be fine. You know, so I.
I'm not, I'm not advocating that Mr. Varner be, be the person, but if we cannot get Ms. Khan back. Again, to be fair to the applicants. We, you know, we may have to reconsider a different time if she's not available right now.
Yeah. So.
Understand what his problem is.
Well, well, it, it doesn't matter yet and we'll, we'll get into that later, what is, if he has some concerns and those. And that we should talk about.
I think he's entitled to have concerns, that's why.
Right, but we're, it's a little bit. I appreciate the heads up a lot, but I, I unaware of that and I. Urged that miss, that we keep the panel as it was assigned at the time and. Um, it seems to me that that's. Ever make up panels, we don't make up panels based upon what I think the answer, the correct, how people are gonna vote. You know, I, we try to get this, there's a system for making up the panels and, and while I think that your. Um, statement, Mr. Henry and your, your um, warning, or not warning, but your call. Is. I think at current time, I want to make, I want to change it because. Like for the app, be approved, even though I think there's three solid, I, I don't know what the, I think there's one solid vote for. For the, for the application at this point, for the variance. So that's, that's the deal. I'm not gonna change the panel on this basis, so we have two choices going forward. Jacinta, have, Ms. Williams, have you been able to get ahold of Ms. Khan?
I have not been able to get ahold of her and I don't have a number for her, so I can't call her. Um, but um, no, short answer is no.
Okay, so here's what I propose we do. I propose we go ahead and. Um, have the hearing, we stop before we get, and we do all the work we're gonna do tonight. Short of and deal with the concerns that any member has, deal with that tonight. We get ahold of Ms. Khan for the next meeting that we can all put on the next meeting. And hopefully it will move quickly for the next, um, next meeting we have, and when is the next meeting after this? Which gives us a problem because it's supposed to go to the planning board next week.
Yeah, it does. Yeah, the next meeting wouldn't be until the twenty seventh of March, so that would mean that the planning board would just, would continue if they're waiting for your decision.
Yeah, it, it's the twenty seventh of March is two weeks away.
They have to stop digging because the deadline is. Find to me what Mister. Mister Henry's problem is.
Well, just, we'll, we'll get to that in a second, but first off. Is there any, we don't, we can't get ahold of Khan. Um, I don't like the notion of structured panels because I hope to have, because I wanna uh, create the impression of a, or I wanna. Because I'm aware of how people are gonna vote, that's not how I wanna create panels. I just don't think that's the right way to do it. Is there a way to have a meeting, uh, a special meeting on this, um, with Ms. Khan sometime next week?
I mean, you can vote to continue it, that way we don't have to re-advertise it, so you can vote to continue to a date certain.
Yeah.
But.
But they're against the deadline and have to get this approved, so the planning board can prove and then there's. The waiting period before they can start to build and the state wants to start the rotary. And all this has to happen in a timely fashion.
Right.
And so, and, and somebody can explain to me why Mister Henry feels he can't serve on this panel. I would like to, probably because I don't have a problem with his serving on.
He feels he can serve on the panel, he feels that he has some concerns about the project, about the variance, excuse me. I think that's what the question is.
Legitimate for him to sit on the panel, that's why, if he's got concerns, he should sit there. I think that we've got, and if we have to have a yes or no, so, as soon as possible, is what I'm understanding. Because of the deadlines of the one year coming up, is that correct, Mister Reedy? That there's a, a deadline that's imminent?
The deadline is more related to the planning board's vote next Wednesday evening. And what this delay with the board would mean for the planning board and when they would vote and then. Appeal period passing and then financing and then, and, 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 so.
I don't like the idea of picking a panel on the way people think they might vote.
Good night, Mr. Varner.
Mr. Varner, you're more than welcome to, to stay and, and watch, um, and I appreciate you. And I appreciate your staying around just in case the uh. We're, I'm glad and just kinda glad you're back on, all right. Okay, thank you, thank you very much, all right. We have a, so we have a full panel, we have myself, we have Mr. Alfeld, we have Mr. Henry, we have Ms. Green, Ms. Greenbaum and Ms. Khan. And they're all in attendance, so we know that, we've gone through submissions, we've gone through disclosures, we've talked about the site visit. Now's the chance for the applicant to, to describe what they are asking us to do and he's already introduced himself and given us his address. So we can proceed.
Here we go, all right, um, so by way of background, we were here a year ago. Uh, requesting and receiving a variance from the zoning board of appeals. Uh, the variance amongst other things, um, did two things that we're looking to modify tonight. One of those said, uh, this variance is applicable to the plan as we had presented it to you. Which showed two buildings. And it also said, and you can build no taller than fifty seven feet, the height cannot be taller than fifty seven feet. And so. Since that time, we've been very busy, um, and there have been some changes. Law changes and economic changes and also some additional diligence that we received. Uh, through the conservation commission process that brings us here to you today. What we're asking uh, is a modification of the variance to change the site plan from instead of two buildings. With uh, eighty five units to one building. And instead of fifty seven feet, uh, in height to fifty nine point five feet. And so I'll start with the, the second piece, um, to talk about the height of the building. I'm gonna share my screen and show you what the single building. Proposed single building. University Drive is to the bottom, Amity Street is on the right. We've got a proposed five-story building, uh, commercial on the first floor, residential above. There are a hundred and sixty parking spaces tucked behind the building. So I'll show you, this is a view from the new roundabout, this is a view from the southeast. This is a view from the northwest and this is the view from inside the site looking to the northeast. So the roundabout, if you could see through the building, would be over in that area, the parking is now tucked behind. So. When, when we were here before, uh, we knew that we had some high groundwater. Um, we knew that if we weren't able to increase the height of the building. Uh, at that time, the project wasn't going forward. And so, uh, we were actually proposing two buildings with parking on the first floor of the building, uh, on both of the buildings. Subsequently, when we went to price out what those buildings would cost. Uh, the steel prices came back as a project killer. That the project would not be able to go forward, uh, if we had to pay for the steel. You need the steel if you were putting parking underneath, because it's, that's the way you have to build it for, from a building code, fire code perspective. And so, as a pivot to still get the important housing that we're getting, to have this project go forward. Because, I mean, w- we've received support kind of at every step of the way. We wrote a letter in support of the roundabout, uh, we were on site with the town manager, with folks from the university. When we found out that, uh, the roundabout was given the grant money. Uh, I think in large part due to this project, so we thought it was very important to move this project forward. In order to do so, we had to eliminate the steel, so that means you're eliminating the um. Podium build, meaning you're eliminating the parking. So in order to have enough parking for the site, what we had to do was. This building is going to be one hundred percent constructed out of wood, there's some additional cost, not to the expense of the steel. In order to, and, and there's a duck, reduction of units, but there's still units. In order to have sufficient parking, we had to eliminate that second building, so all of these things kind of moved together. To get us to the point of today to say, if we want a viable project, that is actually going to work. Uh, w- we have to change it, we, we had to eliminate the steel, we had to increase parking. Um, and this is the design that we've brought forward. We've been through, uh, the planning board, they have, um, voted on findings and conditions. They, I would say, love the design. We are scheduled to be there next Wednesday, where ideally, uh, if you have given us this approval. They will open up the hearing, vote in approval and then close it, I mean, it could be that simple because they've done all of the legwork. We have also been through the conservation commission and they've issued an order of conditions for this design. So that's for the site plan change from two to one. We tried to retain as much as we could with the units, tried to retain as much as we could and in fact have just a little bit more of the commercial space. The building height, so you would approve fifty seven feet. We need to go up two and a half feet for a couple of different reasons, two and a half feet over the fifty seven feet, so fifty nine point five feet is what we're asking for. That's a function of a couple of things, one is additional, uh, test, we did test pits, we had not done test pits. When we met with you last, we did geotechnical borings to understand the cost of the building and compression in the clay layers. But we then had to go and do site, uh, uh, test pits, we did seven test pits. And found that the, the groundwater, so soil conditions. Are between thirty six inches and seventy two inches subsurface, depending on where you are on the site. In order to do a couple of things, particularly to make the stormwater work. And for the stormwater to work, and what I'll do is I'll, I'll share my other screen now so we can talk about the site plan. To make the stormwater work. And, and here's an overlay, if you can see my screen. To make the stormwater work particularly. I get to the drainage and drainage plan, in this basin here, you have to maintain a certain separation. Uh, from groundwater, because if your groundwater is too high, but you carve your basin down. If the groundwater is there, then you're not really getting the storage capacity in the detention basin that you otherwise would get, because it's already filled up with water. So it doesn't work. So what we had to do was, we had to raise the site here a bit, so that a couple of things happened. One, this stormwater work, and then two, the drainage lines. Um, because the way that the stormwater system works is there's some sheet flow to a, a. Stone diaphragm that goes into a, a bioretention basin that gets hyped. Uh, so it like filters here and then gets piped to the drain manhole, to this drain manhole and then ultimately discharges into here. So everything is like elevation based and slope based as a result of the high groundwater. There and over here, we had to raise the site. And then when we raised the site, the way that the Amherst zoning bylaw reads for height is. You find the average grade on the street side of the building. Uh, and then that's how you measure to the, to the flat part of the, uh, of a, to the top part of the flat roof. And so we've got also two different, uh, streets here that we have to, that we're bound by to figure out. Okay, which one is, is guiding. This one here is like a one sixty six point five elevation, this over here is one sixty seven point five elevation. And so, we have to take a one sixty seven elevation. Even though the building itself is starting a little bit higher. And then on top of that, so not only have we raised the site, but we're also, um. This, again, different from when we met last year. The town of Amherst has gone beyond what's called stretch energy code and requires what's called passive house. Pass, this is going to be one of the first passive house multifamily buildings built in town. And it's a little bit of a novelty. Where folks are architects, frankly, we have to hire consultants for air exchanges to make sure we meet certain ratings. And, uh, passive, uh, passive requirements. And so, again, not only have we raised the site a little, but then we've also, there's, um. The need to have additional ductwork between floors to allow for air exchange. So now instead of having like a fifty six foot building, we're gonna have a taller building to fit in those passive house requirements. So what we're asking for in total is instead of fifty seven feet, we'd like fifty nine point five feet. The, the building itself, I think, is gonna be like fifty eight feet, but because of the way that we measure it from the grade. And to allow that additional wiggle room for the uncertainty of passive house, that's why we're asking for the fifty nine point five feet. So th- those are the kind of, the two asks, if you will, we would say that it's, uh, the soil conditions, the, the. The, the groundwater and the stormwater particularly, which are causing a financial hardship. Uh, such that, I mean, relief for this can be, we think can be granted without derogation from purpose or intent of the bylaw. Or frustration, uh, of that intent or derogation from public good. We've received nothing but, um, uh, I think. I don't wanna say praise, but it's been very well received at each stage and so. You know, we think that this fits into what we're trying to do. I'll make one more point and that, there is an overlay district, which should be, uh, it's going to affect this parcel. It should be in front of the town council at some point in the future. I don't know when, I don't know how long it will take to get through that process. One of the items that they're considering is a seven. One of the items that they're considering is a seventy-foot. Height requirement. So we would be. Under ten and a half, uh, sorry. Um, ten point five feet. Ten feet, six inches. Under that, uh. New seventy-foot requirement. So it. There's, it's moving in the right direction. We just frankly, don't have the time to wait to see. When that gets approved, and then it's approved by the Attorney General. This is a project that, uh, Mr. Roberts is looking to deliver. For August of twenty twenty-six. And so here we are in, in March of twenty-five. It may seem like a world away. Uh, with your approval and the planning board's approval next week, I think you'll start seeing site work begin. End of April, beginning of May, and we're also coordinating with the town for, to, to have the work coincide with what's happening, uh, on that roundabout. So. I'm happy to stop and answer any questions. I've probably gone on a little longer than I wanted to. Uh, but hopefully that gives you a good sense of how it's changed from before, why we're doing this. Uh, if, if we were to be lower, we'd have four stories. The project doesn't pencil. I mean, especially now with the cost of things and. Especially now with the uncertainty given some of the material costs because of what's happening. With the current administration and, and tariffs. So. We would request, um, your, uh, approval. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, questions for Mr. Reedy? Um, Mr. Henry, why don't you go?
Thank you. So Attorney Reedy, um, when, when we were here last fall. Were, were these factors considered in? I mean, you, you proposed to build two buildings. Um, are you changing that the site has changed significantly then that requires us now to go? Um, this extra two and a half. I, I'm, I'm just trying to understand. Why this was not a consideration when this was first brought to us, um, last fall?
Great question. Um, so two, two. Changes. One is. Actually doing the test pits. And, I mean. Attorney Harry, if I had known before, I would have come in with the complete package. W- we just, we did not know. We had not intended on doing any of those test pits. But through the Conservation Commission process, we worked with Aaron and Aaron said, hey, listen, I. You gotta do these. We want you to do these to make sure stormwater. So we did them and we found out that it was a little higher. Because I'll back up and say, we thought that we could just use the detention basin as, as it exists. The Conservation Commission said, you know, through Aaron in D E P, uh, no. Even though that detention basin exists and was approved when it was originally developed back in like two thousand and six, it doesn't meet today's standards. And even though this is a redevelopment project, you're still going to have to come into compliance with today's standards. So we have to change it from being a detention basin to a bioretention basin, blah, blah, blah. So that was one of the things. And we just, we didn't know the stormwater was, and we didn't think that we were going to have to do it because we didn't think we have to comply with today's standards. Second piece is the passive house. Um, the passive house just came into effect. Uh, for, for projects which receive a building permit after July one of twenty twenty-five, strike that, twenty twenty-four. So at the time when we were in front of you, we thought there was a good chance, you know, I think in, in March is when we got it. We thought there was a good chance. That we would get through the process to actually get, um, the building permit, so we wouldn't be subject to this passive house. And so fifty-seven feet, not having to do the duct work. Based upon the existing detention basin design. You know, we thought we were fine, frankly. And then those couple of things changed. To require this pivot to what we're asking for now.
And, and in reference to the parking, so if I understood correctly. Um, y- you're asking for this extra two and a half feet, so the first floor is a little bit higher. Are you doing, is the site being graded higher for the additional parking or as, as well?
For stormwater? Yeah, so it, it's a great question. The site was about. Uh, maybe a foot lower before, half a foot to a foot lower. In the previous iteration. But we have to grade. The whole site up, and I'll share my screen again, not to belabor the point, but it's in order to. A, keep separation of, uh, the basins, et cetera, from stormwater. So if, if, if our engineer, he looks at this and says, okay, test pit. Whatever that is, three is, uh, has, you know, thirty-six inches, water is thirty-six inches below the surface. I need to keep a certain, uh. Amount of free area so that if there's a surcharge, I can still get water into the ground so I can count this capacity. So he couldn't change the bottom of this basin. But he still has to have these pipes, all of these pipes that you see here. Blow to here. And so obviously, what do you need for pipes? You need pitch. Not a ton, but just enough. And so if the site itself was too low, he could not get the pitch that he needed the, to appropriately drain into this because. In ideal world, the groundwater would be low enough, he'd be able to dig down. There'd be enough separation to groundwater so that the, the pitch of the pipes, without raising the site and maybe even cutting the site. Would work. Right? But that's not the case. So he can't touch the bottom of this, which means that that's his fixed point. And he has to make sure all the pitch to the pipes works. And so. To, to get to that place to make sure everything flows the right way, he had to pick up the site.
And so. In your ask, the, this extra two and a half feet. If I heard earlier correctly, right correctly, this building. Will have solar panels, yes?
I'm not sure if we have to. We are designing it to, uh, to be able to have it. I just don't know the cost of actually doing that. I think, and I don't know passive house well enough, uh, Mr. Henry. To know whether we have to provide them. I know we have to set aside at least forty percent of the rooftop area for solar panels. And one of the things in your packet is, uh, showing what it would look like with solar panels. I think, uh, the developer is very interested in getting them, especially on the roof for like an owner's meter, so to take care of the parking lot lights and any of those common lights. So.
So, th- the question isn't that more if you're, if you are going to have them. It's more on if we. If this variance is granted, the extra two and a half feet. Does that factor in? Solar panels? Or will the solar panels add additional? Height?
Great question. So the way that we are talking about height is the way that it's defined in a bylaw. And so for a flat roof building, it's to, uh, the flat portion of the roof, not including any mechanicals. So. Here, let me pull up the other, um, image so you can see it. Because you'll see on top. See this up here? This is, this is like, uh, uh, I think it's a five-foot fence. Um, it's actually going to be made, be made of the same as the siding, so it hopefully will blend in. Inside here are all the, uh, HVAC units, and this is the screening around it. The screening and the HVAC do not count towards building height under your bylaw. And so the height is to where this. If you can follow my cursor, it's to where the cursor is, right? And I'll. I'll go down.
So it's building specific?
Correct. It is building specific. And so here's. You know, I'll go in. And then you'll see here, right? You've got the roof line at, you know, two twenty-five, six. The first floor at one sixty-seven, six. And so that's where you've got two twenty-five point five minus. Fifty-eight feet. So the building itself is fifty-eight feet. But because of wiggle room plus, um. To allow in case of passive house, you know, we have to increase the height by six inches because we need to fit an additional duct work. Uh, and because of the surrounding roadways. That's why we're asking for fifty-nine point five feet. But like. And it's just like a, I don't want to say a math game, but we've talked to the building commissioner, we've determined how to measure the. Roads in proximity. We said, and I sent this to Rob, I said, here's what it is. It's fifty-eight feet. We're already up a half a foot because of the roadway, so that's fifty-eight point five feet. Let's build in another foot for passive house to make sure that. If we do need to increase the spacing between floors instead of a twelve-inch joist, we need a sixteen-inch joist. Then we built that in so we don't have to come back before you to ask for relief.
And, and. In, in the prior permits. I'm, I'm sorry, in the prior plan, this is meant to be two buildings. And can you remind me how many units would have been both buildings combined?
Eighty-five.
And in this one building, how many units?
We have seventy-eight currently. We probably could get up to eighty-five, but right now it's, it's, uh, seventy-eight units.
And, and when we last talked about this, um. I, I believe there's a number that have been allocated to be low income. Um, what was that number?
There are nine units allocated as, as low income in, including, and we've worked this with the planning board. Including. I forget if it's two or three of them as, so to, to get affordable, it needs to be thirty percent of eighty percent of the area median income. And several of these, I forget if it's two or three of them, um. Are sixty percent instead of eighty percent. So it's thirty percent of sixty percent. So they're. Even for those folks who are lower income than the eighty percent.
So from a pure numbers perspective. If, if the prior building was going to be eighty-five, this new one is seventy-eight. Does this new building reduce the number of low-income units that would have been in the prior plan?
I believe by one.
Well, it's twelve percent, right?
Correct. Yes. So I think it was ten required with the eighty-five unit. And nine required with the seventy-eight units.
And, and, and for these eighty-five units, um, the proposal was a hundred and sixty-four parking spaces?
There's a hundred and sixty parking spaces for these seventy-eight units.
And does that include parking spaces for the commercial part of it?
It does. And, um. The way that it's working is called shared parking. Such that there are some, uh, parking spaces which will be dedicated just for residential. And then there'll be some parking spaces which are hybrid. So you'll have some commercial between eight AM and five PM. And then from five PM to eight AM, those will become residential spaces. We've done this successfully. Over at One University Drive South, that's the eye, there's the eye doctors there on the first floor. Uh, and this kind of complement, because they're complementary uses, and so that has worked out really well. Uh, Gail Flood does a terrific job at, at setting expectations and, and managing. You know, who's appropriate to take these spaces to make sure that they're not interfering with each other.
And would. With, with this new variance, um. Not counting anything on UMass's property, would this be the tallest building in town? By any chance?
Oh, it's a good question. Um. It may be. I don't know what Kyle and Archipelago, I don't know what they've done downtown. Um, it, it may be.
Those are five. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I, I know.
No, that's all right. I was just gonna say that those are five-story buildings downtown, right?
They are.
Your five-story, this is a five-story building as well, but it. I, you know, I don't know. If it's, those are pretty. Yeah, I, I just don't know. Go, go ahead, Mr. Henry. That's okay. You have questions and. So please, continue with it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, um. Going back to, you know, the, the design plan and with an entire building out. Um, how, how big of a change? And if you can just articulate what those changes are, and, and I know I saw. Um, the new proposed building and landscaping and things like that, but. How, and I saw the roundabout. Um. What has been gained, if anything, going from two buildings to one building for Amherst now?
Uh, I'd simply say a, a, a project. Because if, if you were to say. Tom build two buildings, I'd say, uh, Mr. Henry, we can't because. Either A, the cost to build it with steel is too high, or B. Uh, you build it all out of wood, you're not going to have enough parking, and so you're not going to make that investment. Or. C, if you were to build only four stories out of wood, you're not going to get, uh, it won't cover the debt service. It won't cover the debt service and expenses. So. I'd say first, the town gets a project. They get the taxes from the project. They get the, you know, like I had said, there was, uh, this project wrote a letter. In support of the roundabout, which I think the state used kind of in reliance on saying, wow. Um, if we do this, because, because part of the, the pitch. And I'll show the other screen for a second. Part of the pitch to the state was. Uh, you know, hey, listen, state. Um, there are currently. Curb cuts at this site, right? There's this curb cut and there's this curb cut. If you, state. Um. Put in this round, that we really need this roundabout, so please give us the money. And when you do that, what we are going to do is we're going to close those curb cuts. And we're going to build this new building right up to the property line, which you wouldn't have been able to do before. Um, because those curb cuts are there. But because you're going to hopefully give us the money for the roundabout. Then we can close those curb cuts. So. Help the town get this. A significant tax revenue plus, uh, this whole first floor here is going to be commercial space. And so I think there's like twelve thousand two hundred square feet of commercial space. Plus nine affordable units, uh, plus additional housing units generally. Um, and, and really being kind of a bookend to a really important part of town. Um. You know, this is, I know university is looking to do things on their property. This kind of helps spur a lot of this overlay district talk. I can tell you that. This would comply with the overlay district. Um, so if we were to go back in, again, it's a matter of timing. Uh, we would get approved under the overlay district. That. I don't want to say it was, uh, you know, chicken of the egg, but. The overlay district has evolved. So that a project like this is allowed, right? We haven't materially changed our project. I think what's happened is the planning board has said. Wow, this is a good project. Let's make sure that the overlay district allows projects like this. So this is not only like a first of the kind of its. The first of its kind. But all those other benefits, you know, and I, like you've mentioned, the landscaping, et cetera. Um, it's going to beautify that area and really act as, uh. You know, I, I think a welc-, a, a, a welcoming area to town from the university. And a, a good lasting impression from those folks going into the university by this building.
So, and, and I ask this, um, final question. And I, I understand, I mean. And where, where it is in proximity now to UMass, I mean. What, what, when we were two buildings, you know, the concern of this not being. Strictly. Student housing, and I, and I don't mean that in the sense that, you know, you're building for student housing, but where it's not completely inhabited by students. You know, one building now at the edge of UMass. Kind of almost pushes it that way. Um. Uh, has that been, is that concern or been raised or looked at to say, I mean, how do we make sure that? You know, this is not just a UMass. Lack of better term, a UMass property, but actually residents of the town of Amherst, you know. Here is a professional building that you can live in and not just be. Like, again, another building targeted at students.
Yeah, great, great question. I think this. Uh, the answer is a couple of things, and, and I think it's, uh, infrastructure. Uh, I think it's tenant selection, tenant advertisement. What I'll say is in, in Barry's other. Properties like Seventy University Drive. Has a mix of graduate, undergraduate professors, professionals, affordable. It's a terrific mix. Uh, one eighty Fearing Street, right next to the university. Has, has a mix. You would think, oh, if there's ever going to be a bunch of students, that's where they are. It's not the case. There's retired folks who just love the vibrancy of the area. There is affordable families who are in there. Um, and so I think. Part of it is, is, like I said, the infrastructure, part of it is tenant selection, and then it's management. Not that there's anything wrong with students, but you don't want to necessarily fill a building just. With students. Th- there is something to having that mix. Both from like, uh, a management perspective. Some self-regulation perspective, and I think of, just a business perspective. Because if you put all your eggs in a basket, who knows if the, the bottom of that basket falls out. This way, it's a little bit of a diversification, which. I think it's just smart business practice. So. I'm, I'm not like, it's rented by the unit, it's not rented by the bedroom, there's not Bed Bath Parody, it's not like. We are not building something down in the fraternity sorority park, right? If you've seen those plans, it's a much different layout. These. Um, you know, let me share, I think I've got. Um you know, let me share, I think I've got. On that last plan, you can see like what the inside looks like, I mean, these are, these are going to be. Sure. You know, so this is interior finish, you know, something like this, good, large, airy. You've got outside kind of community spaces with some seating, you've got some uh seating here. There can be other programming depending upon who the end user is of this commercial space. And plus, there's gonna be commercial uses in here, right, we're we're talking to several different commercial businesses. They don't wanna be in a student housing complex, right, that that's, we're not gonna be able to get the rent. Needed in order to justify the cost of this, if it's uh a place that's not really well-maintained or managed, and if. It doesn't take much uh for. A commercial tenant to say, you know, you breached the, I mean, you know, right, uh you've breached our lease, uh we're out of here. And you know, th- that's not for a whole host of reasons what we wanna have happen, so. You know, I think those are the safeguards in place that we've got.
And and understanding your early comments about the concerns of the economy, um. You know, i- if this variance is approved, does this project get built? As submitted, given that you've cleared all the hurdles, conservation, um planning committee is essentially about to vote on this. Or, you know, is there any assurances that, you know, you won't run into something else, and you have to come back asking for some other change? This, you know, once you get this, you're building this building.
Yeah, and um I wanna be respectful of you, right, cuz I I value you, I value my reputation in front of you. I can't say that, right, not that I know anything else, but as a lawyer, I can't sit here and tell you, I will. You know, Mr. Henry, I will absolutely build, we will absolutely build this building, what I will say is, if nothing else materially changes. May we change the interior footprint a little bit, yeah, we may, are we gonna change the exterior footprint, no. May we bring in, you know, we're in the scheme of checking out the bump outs, and maybe we we may. Change them by less, you know, a foot, less than two feet to streamline some things like that type of stuff, but we won't have to come back. To you for approval. One other thing, if town council does in fact pass this overlay, and we're so far, because. Barry's ready to start taking down the old Raptors building, once we get these approvals, right, before he gets financing, he's gonna start taking them down. If at some point in like September, we find out, oh my gosh, these prices are ridiculous, and we need. We're gonna go back to the planning board, because I think by that point, just as a practical matter. The overlay district will exist, and we could modify anything we needed to there. So I just wanna be honest.
In that instance, you wouldn't need a variance from us.
Precisely, precisely, so I'm just, I mean, again, I value my reputation, I can't say yes, but as it stands right now, uh, Mr. Henry. I mean, we're back to you because we have to be, because we want to build this building based upon all those things I said, right, I'm not trying to. Death by a thousand cuts, I'm not trying to bait and switch, these are just things that we didn't know about, that now we know about, and we are. I mean, we're ready to, if we're gonna hit an August twenty twenty-six delivery, and I think Gail's on, so she's probably saying. Let's get going, you know, yesterday, you know, we've gotta start ordering the materials from Hamshaw Lumber. We gotta start ordering the kitchen, we have to start, like, we have to start ordering so that we can stockpile it. Or else we've got a lot, we've got bigger problems, and then, you know, this is the risk in development. Because you sign alone, you have an interest-only period, you have delivery, you're getting tenants, you're promising tenants, you're gonna deliver at a certain period of time. There are consequences if you don't, the the not the least of which is, do you have to put them up somewhere else, can you finish your building? Are you still paying interest, uh have you run out of money because the the expense of the building is too much now, so it's just like. Time is the friend of no deal, especially in this sort of development, so i- if you give us the approval, we're gonna do everything we can to build this building.
Thank you, Attorney, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for nominating us all these questions.
You bet. Other people have questions, other members, Ms. Greenbaum. You're you're muted.
Um I'm thinking about, everybody knows that's wet area of town, everybody knows that the high points. Sort of drain down in that direction, the con con is is happy with this. Um I'm thinking about Venice is sinking, I'm thinking Back Bay of Boston is all built. In a wetland with wood and timbers holding those buildings up, cuz wood, I guess, doesn't rot in water. Uh my issue is, well, first of all, I don't mind voting for the increase in height because. I'm sure it's gonna sink two feet underwater and. How, but how can you justify it as hardship? If you knew when you bought the land, it was in a wet area with a high water table, that's my my question. How how can you justify hardship when you know ahead of time you had a problem?
I don't know that that's how you look at hardship, right, because I suppose that no variances would ever be granted, because somebody would say, well, then you you should have known. Right, whether it was the soil or shape of a lot, or the topography of a lot, like, if if that's the definition of hardship. Then no one is ever getting a variance, but that's not the case, because variances are granted, and so I think what you have to do is is. Look at. It's a, to me, variances are always balancing, right, and and does it make sense on balance, given what the request is? And all of these other factors, and can the board find its way to say, it this, this makes sense, and so. Sure, I'll I'll tell you, Hilda, just as far as a business deal goes, uh the sellers weren't waiting around for us to do all this diligence. Right, those, I mean, it was the the pot shop, they were saying, they said, hey, here's what it is, you're gonna close in this period of time, or you're not gonna buy. And it's it's just a business decision that you have to make at the time to say, I will take my chances, because if not. Who knows if I'm gonna get that chance again, and that's that's just how it is.
Is the building on a sinks ten feet or can can you help? Uh it's spread out over a big area, uh it may have a better chance of floating than the two buildings.
Yeah, and we have, I mean, w- we we talked with. OTO for for geotechnical, we have Rob Johnson, who's a terrific structural engineer, right, this isn't just like, let's hope. Uh you know, this is a a a fifty-three million dollar project, right, this this is a real, real project.
That's why.
Pardon me?
I said, that's exactly why I'm asking.
Yeah, right, well, right, and and as far as the assessors goes, it's a it's a twenty million, it's a five million dollar project, so. Uh but no, I mean, we are going through to make sure that the settling is not going to, like, there's spread footings, they're cute, like. We're going through all of that to make sure that it will work.
Is it fl- is it is it really on footings, or is it like a a floating slab?
It's slab on grade with, I think, very big biddings that will bear the weight of that building, it's a it's a heavy building, right, so I think. Bigger they are, the more that they can uh bear.
It's problematic, but. Anyway, I think it's gonna sink.
Mr. Alfeld.
If I could just offer a little civil engineering information here to alleviate Hilda's concern, I hope. Fort River School is also being built on terrible soils, soils are pre uh prepared. In the construction process, one way that's done is to load them with uh with soil to put to to apply a weight to it. Using dirt for a long period of time to squeeze the water out of the. Underlying soils and compress them to get the compression happening before you put up the building, I don't know if that would be used here, but I'm sure. Uh that the 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 applicants would be foolish not to employ the best geotechnical engineers that can solve these problems. I did, if I may have a have a question, um I'm a little confused on the solar. You've got plans for both the uh parking lot and the roof. Is it one or the other, or both, or neither, or what's the status of that?
It's a big maybe, and so let me tell you kind of the genesis of this, so. When I talked to the building commissioner, I said, you know, hey, Rob, we're thinking about potentially putting. Uh cuz there's another project that Barry's working on, and he's at that project thinking about doing a parking lot canopy, it has a lot of benefits to it. Smart three point O is coming out sometime likely next year through the Department of Energy Resources. We wanna investigate it, and Rob said, well, if you're going to do it, like, because the variance is conditioned on the plan, at least show us where it would go. And so that's what we're doing, is to say, if we're gonna do it, here's where it's gonna go, same thing with the rooftop. If we're gonna do it, here's where it's gonna go, not that we are in fact doing it or not doing it, it's, I mean, frankly, a little too early to know. The rooftop is probably more likely, just because, like I said, we would do an owner's meter. The canopy is probably, like, I don't see us doing behind the meter, I would see us doing something. Like for profit, which I don't know if it pencils out yet, based on the cost of the steel and the blah 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 blah, so it was more of a. If you approve it like this, it gives us the flexibility, if we do in fact wanna do it in the future.
Mr. E, I have a just a question, a process question. So this, you've got cut and fill limitations in the town bylaws. And when you're cut and fill over a certain number of square feet, you've gotta get permission to do that. Does the planning board make that decision in this case because of this property, and that's it's not something that we have to look at, right? The amount of square feet of. Soil you have to add to the to the property is not our determination, it comes from the planning board.
Correct.
And in addition to the, all the this. The design of the building, the the design of the each of the units. The number of units all get determined by the planning board at this case, it doesn't, that's not, I mean, we can ask questions about it, but. We don't have jurisdiction over that in this instance, because it's um because of the cuz of the zoning law, it's all planning.
It's, yeah, yeah, and.
All we have before us are is a variance on height and on um.
The building, the the site.
The site, right, that's it, that's all we've got, okay. Are there other questions for Mr. Reidy, for the applicant, yep, Mr. Alfeld?
Um we talked about this at the site visit, but I uh to the the. Um the building that you're proposing, this this single building, is very similar to the. Building that was proposed to be on the corner in the first plan last year. Except that the portion that extends along University Drive is longer. Isn't that correct?
And so, yes, let me, uh if you can follow these lines, I'll explain them, the blue lines that you see. Are the previous proposal, so the one that the the board had approved. So you see the parking came in, were actually more impactful to the to the wetlands, came around, this was that drive aisle, if if you remember. And then here was the building. You can see here, there was gonna be a a full access, and then the other building had ended here, right, so what we've done is. Taken this building down and really turned it into parking in essentially the same configuration, we pulled in our limit of disturbance. To uh have less impact on the wetland, we've extended the building here, and then instead of the curb cut here, we bumped the curb cut over here. This curb cut stayed the same, this portion of the building stayed the same, this stayed the same, this stayed the same, this stayed the same, but instead of stopping here, it extended here. That got shifted, and then, like I said, this building was removed.
Thank you. And this last, this curb cut on Amity Street, that's the existing curb cut, that's the third one farthest from the. There are two that you you're closing up, and that's the third one that it currently exists.
Yeah, and I mean, to be technically correct, it's gonna be moving just a little bit. I'll show you this one, so this is the, the blue is what's existing on site currently. So you see right here is the curb cut between here and here, the black is what is in the the proposal before you currently. And so we're shifting it a little bit towards the west, you'll see right here, but this one's being closed, and this one's being closed. But you can get a sense of, you know, where this building is.
Immensely, that's, I think that's a big safety increase. People coming out of those first two, they're they're cutting across all the way down that um access road coming from. Big Y or whatever, and they're coming out there and trying to make a left-hand turn onto Amity Street. And it's just, it's, I think that's far safer, and you're not trying to cut into. Traffic at a light, which there'll no longer be a light, so it's gonna be much safer all the way around.
Agreed, agreed.
I wouldn't wanna be making a left-hand turn from where the 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 first curb cut that no longer is going to exist. And trying to get on Amity Street when I'm looking at the uh uh roundabout and trying to figure out if it's safe to go or not. That would drive me nuts, all right. Um any other questions for the applicant, any other concerns? Okay, um I would entertain a motion, oh, well, we have to get public comment, is there anybody um. From the public who wishes to comment on this, if you do so, raise your hand. And we will provide, uh raise your hand and we'll provide a opportunity for you to speak. I see no.
No hands, that's correct.
So unless there's any further questions or any comments from the applicant, I would entertain a motion to move to. The public meeting while keeping the public hearing open, so that we can discuss um conditions. And the um findings we have to make for the. The the findings we have to make for the variance, and and just just discussions on disposition of the board towards this application.
I move to go into a public meeting, keeping public hearing open.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, just moved in second, and is there any discussion? There's no discussion, the vote occurs on the motion to go into public meeting while keeping the public hearing open, Chair votes aye, Mr. Alfeld. Mr. Alfeld. Ms. Greenbaum. Mr. Henry.
Aye.
Ms. Khan.
Aye.
Vote is five to nothing, uh we're moving into public meeting while keeping the public hearing open, so um. Mr. Henry, I think you've asked a lot of good questions, that, I mean, they make a lot of, there's, but I think many of the things that you're. Asking about really are not, or beyond the, what we're empowered under the town law. Be able to deal with, um I think the composition of the building, the differences of, you know, room size, how many bedrooms. Um I think the question about how many of these are affordable, all of those are really really good questions. Um that should be asked, but I, it's just not something that we can deal with. Here, and I think I heard a number of concerns that you have, which just are not. Part of what we have before us tonight, which is whether we're gonna grant this variance for for two feet, um two and a half feet. But I think those concerns are are all valid, I I really wish the ZBA had the authority to deal with all of this, but somehow the. Powers that be in the past have given that to the planning board, and we don't have those issues, I think that if we did. I would be urging a greater number of, if possible, greater number of affordable units. But I don't think, but we don't have that authority. And the other issues I think that are raised. I I understand the notion that you don't know what you're gonna do with the solar issue, um whether it's gonna, whether you're even gonna have it. Whether you're gonna have it as on the parking lot or on top of the building, you're looking to have some flexibility to go one way or the other, or maybe no, no way. Um I think that makes sense, and um and I also in. I also really wonder if you're gonna be able to pencil this out with all the uncertainties. With building materials in the next few months, it's gonna be really a challenge, um and. You know, so if there, if the overlay district comes in, uh you'll be able to deal with them directly, and I I hope you won't have to come back to us, but. It's gonna be really, um it I think it's gonna be a challenge to get this built, and I understand the desire to do it as soon as possible. So I'm comfortable with this, the the minor changes, I was comfortable with the original. Um variance requests, I thought it added a lot to the town, I think it adds, you know, adding seventy-eight units of housing is great, adding nine units of. Affordable housing, two units of which at sixty percent of median income, sixty percent of eighty, I mean, is. Uh sixty percent of median income is great, eighty percent is is good too, but sixty percent, two units for that is. Affordable, could be affordable families, uh that's, I think that's a real plus. Um so I'm inclined to be supportive of this, and um and I, it's not without. Not without questions to ask about it, but I'm inclined to be supportive of the variance request. Um I'd like to hear from other members.
So Mr. Attorney Reidy did answer my questions, I mean, some of the questions I ask, I I know. Affordability for low income were some of, some of the same ones I raised. Some of the same ones I raised when. We did this in the fall and I did support it then. And again, I I I think that Attorney Reedy um. Did excellent job answering my questions and I and I do understand um. The reason for the ask and the change of plan. So I I I do feel satisfied with his responses, so I am also inclined to support it.
Are there other? Comments or questions? Mister Alfeld.
I'll just say that I'm I'm, I find the argument related to needing to raise the entire parking lot and. And building uh for the for for to make the drains work. I find that compelling. Um, as well as the additional height needed for the um. Uh. Heating and ventilating. Duct work. Between floors, which apparently is needed for the uh. Pass passive house requirement. So I'm also inclined towards approval.
All right, um, what I'd like to do, Ms. Khan, do you have any comments? Or Miss Greenbaum?
No.
No.
All right. So what what I'd like to do is move to proposed conditions. There's in the project app, the draft project application report. There's a, there's eleven proposed conditions. Uh, condition one, two, and three. All deal with um. Potential solar. Um, use, whether it's. On the garage or on top. And. This, it seems to me that. Um. This, this, these first three conditions provides a very, provide the flexibility that. The applicant is seeking. The fourth condition just restates the fifty-nine point five feet. Is the number of floor and the number of floors at five is what they're requesting for the fifty-nine point five feet is what they're requesting in the variance. Uh, just in a lot area per dwelling unit shall be no lower than twenty-five hundred square feet. That's consistent with the request of the applicant.
And Mister Chair, can I just jump in on two and three quickly, if you don't mind going back up? It just says it it shall be exercised. I don't know if we want to say, I don't want to say maybe exercised. Or. I just don't want to be compelled to put in the solar. If we're not gonna put in the solar, right? I just. I don't want somebody to say, hey, wait a second, we approved it, you've got to put in the solar. So if you want to say this variance. It it perfect. I think that's wonderful, Jacinda. Is permitted to be exercised. And then the same for three. I think one is just the regular site plan, which is great. Uh, save for substantial changes, then two and three are that way. And then you were just getting into six through ten. Um, my only comment here, that's from the building, strike that.
Let's just go to, let's just keep on two and three for a second. Uh, I think I I understand your, and I agree with your desire, uh. What you want to say, but but this variance shall be exercised in accordance. You know, I. Presented to the board on such as proof of the board, any change to proof plan. I guess it's just clearer that I don't think this compels you to do it. The shell is, he said, if you're gonna. If you're gonna do it, it shall be in exercise in accordance with the site plan and with the proposal of pa- parking canopy. But I, you know, I think it's clearer. If we say uh Shelby, how did you state it is permitted to be exercised is a clearer way to do it, but. Uh, you know, I thought it was probably. Gave you the flexibility. Before that, so I think that's a good change. For both two and three.
Thank you.
All right, so and and your concern on six through ten?
Six through ten, yeah, so that that's part of the uh town engineer letter. Um, this is a little, I I I know he sent it to you, Jacinda. I think he meant to send it to the planning department. One of the things uh in the planning board draft conditions, condition fifty-four of the planning board is. Construction of the project shall comply with the requirements of the town engineer as listed in his letter dated February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five and provided to. Uh, Ms. Williams for the zoning board of appeals review. So I don't know if we want to take that out, I, because again here. If there's a change that Jason says on site, hey, listen, we don't want this, we want this. Do I then have to come back before you versus just leaving it in the site plan? Then it's site plan approval, which gives Rob more, a little bit more flexibility. So I would just ask, like, it's going to be a condition, we are going to comply with it with the with the site plan. I don't know that we need to put it in the variance.
I do have a question, Attorney Reedy. If they are waiting for the approval from the ZBA, wouldn't the fact that it's in the conditions? And the approved conditions give you more leverage? Because then they would know that we saw. EPW's comments and we were okay with them and we. Approved it with those conditions.
I don't. I don't think they care so much. Respectfully, I think the way they're looking at it is, let's make sure that fifty-nine point five feet is okay. And that that's like the real. That's the real discussion and why, like, they didn't approve it last time, because they were waiting for this. Um, this is, I mean. We work with Jason. All the time. If he changes what he wants, he's gonna get what he wants. Barry works with him. You know, on on all these different projects. And if you look at like some of these, you know, stormwater indicates that the stormwater flow rates will be reduced. You know. Okay, that's his kind of, that's him just saying it. The sixty-foot long bus pullout will accommodate, should they have, right? That. These things we've got, like I said, in the design with the with the planning board. So I would just ask. For some flexibility, let it be a condition of their approval. Um. And so then if there are changes to what Jason wants, I don't feel compelled to have to come back here to modify this approval. To change what Jason wants in the future, because what he wants has changed.
Can you read the language again that you had for them?
He, yeah, I mean, I would just eliminate them.
You just want to eliminate it.
Yes.
You're looking, yeah, and what you're looking at here is not not six through ten in reviewing them. Has nothing to do with the height. Or anything that any of our granting of the variance. They're they're all good ideas. Um, and I hope. That. You're required to do it.
We are, we are.
Yeah. We're required to do it, but it seems to me that none of this. None of this, except maybe the. No, even the cast iron water main on Main Street is dealing with water cup is. Drinking water coming in, it's not. And the stormwater management plan. Flow rates, uh, that's. The Concom had to approve that, right? Isn't that a concom? Right? So that's not us.
Right.
Bus pull is planning, eight-foot line landing is planning board. And I've never seen the construction permit costs. You know, in um. In a condition before, so. All right, um. That make might make sense, Mister Alfeld, your.
I had. I had flagged all that when I was reading this as at that five, that six through ten were not necessary. In fact, problematic, and so I would concur that they should be all cut.
Yeah. Ms. Greenbaum?
I just wanted to know why we couldn't just update the one from from last year. Why? Why do we need more than that?
Oh. I I I don't know what you, we've got the. There is.
The two things we're concerned is the change of the building and the height. Why can't we just? Put those, wh- why do we need this list that we're going through now?
Well, the one, two, one, one's. Got to be built along with the um, the plans, that's, that's always the case. Two and three deal with potential solar going up or down or.
So that you have to add, but but all that other stuff is related to to planning.
Yeah, six through ten, we don't, I agree with you. I don't think we need six through ten. But I think we need one through five. And uh eleven.
What's eleven? I can't see it.
Eleven is, it's gotta be. You, that's the timeframe, is that you got to get working on this within a year.
But that's, that's in the, in the first permit. But that's why I said.
Right, but this, but this would be for this, the the clock starts now, doesn't. Last year, yeah, so we need to, we need to do this.
Now, what I'm saying is this using the all perimeter for a template essentially, rather than put all the stuff in that that you were adding.
Well, um.
The solar, the solar have to be part of that?
I think one through five and.
That's related to the height, yes, I'm right.
Six through ten does not have to be, all that other stuff that's the planning board, that doesn't need to be in here.
But the solar does, I'm wrong, the solar does have to be in there.
Yeah, the solar has to be in here because that's part of the reason for the height increase. So I. I would move that I would unentertain a motion that we approve conditions. One through. Five and eleven as amended. Um. Is there a such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I seconded.
Moved and seconded? Any discussion? On the motion? If, if not the motion, the vote occurs on the motion. The chair votes aye, Ms. Greenbaum.
Uh.
Mister Alfeld. Mister Henry.
Aye.
Ms. Khan.
Aye.
The vote is five to nothing, the conditions are approved. Next, we have to make findings specific to. Approval of a variance. Variances are something that we don't do very often. And they're very specific, they have to make very specific findings. Um. As um. Wait, by way of background, variances. Shall be dealt only with by the Board of Appeals in accordance with chapter forty-eight and general laws amended. I think we're doing, then grant no various. Variances which would amount to an amendment of this bylaw. We haven't amended the bylaw, we're granting a variance, so I think we made that finding. The key findings are section three point zero one. Um, numbers one, two, three, and four. There are four different specific findings we have to make. They deal with the first is circumstances relating to solar conditions, shape or topography that especially affect the property. For which a variance is sought, but do not generally affect the zoning district in which the land or structure is located. Uh, we make, we made this finding the first time, and I think the request for the variance is due to height groundwater. Uh, and a new knowledge of the groundwater height. And the elevation to allow for appropriate functioning of the stormwater system in compliance with the wetland regulation. That's the first finding. Second finding, facts showing that substantial hardship. Financial or otherwise will result from literal enforcement of the applicable zoning restrictions on the land or building. Uh, it's not due just to the prospect of financial hardship, but the, even the the others, the other um con- existing conditions. Will also cause a hardship to try to try to complete this project.
May I just maybe suggest take out the word not? So the request for variance is not due, because I think we're saying, if you don't grant it, there probably is no project.
But it's not, it's not solely due to the prospect of financial hardship, right?
Right, but it, I mean, frankly, uh, it could be. Like, the way the law is written is that it's it's hardship, substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. So. Uh, fi- financial hardship is a suitable hardship. For the board to make the determination that. There would be a hardship if they don't grant the relief that we're asking for and the hardship is related to soil conditions. So. I just want to, you know, a simple, there's probably something else we could say, but just if we eliminate the the not, then I feel a lot better. If you want to add more, by all means. Is due to the prospect of financial hardship. And. We could add some other, something else to it.
Well, that was my, I, that is how I kind of described it, so maybe a good good way is. Request for a variance is due to financial, the prospect of financial hardship and other. Um. What would you call other factors?
Sure, yeah. Other considerations. Thank you.
That's a better one, because that, yeah, other considerations. All right. Uh, number three, facts supporting a finding that the relief sought will be desirable without substantial detriment to public good. Um. I think these gonna benefit, great benefit to the public, additional housing, um. It complies with stormwater, um, and. Creates more development downtown, or at least encourages it, and it works with the state. Important part of the state to deal with the roundabout on Amity and. University Drive and four facts supporting the findings. That the relief sought may be given without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent and purposes of the zoning bylaw. Uh, indeed, the zoning bylaws is to try to get. Uh, significantly, um. Sign get significant new housing, mixed-use development, and to provide for affordable housing. Uh, I'm increasing affordable housing, and I think this does that, uh, in all cases, and. And advances the purpose of the zoning bylaw. Is, is there any, uh, do people? Is there any comment on the findings?
We want to say somewhere about improved traffic flow, why did you say that? By by allowing the rotary.
You know, we could do that on a board under three, you know, it's it's, we could say. Relief to benefit the public good is would bring the project into compliance to stay in look for stormwater, wetland. Being cared to with the development. And would um. Facilitate. Improvement in traffic.
Traffic improvement.
Yeah, facilitate traffic, uh, improve traffic flow in the area.
Um. The at the intersection, I would put. Traffic flow at the intersection.
Intersection of Amity and University Drive. Got it. Any other comments, questions, concerns on the findings? If not. Uh, I would entertain a motion to approve the findings.
So moved.
Second. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded twice. Uh. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, the vote occurs on the motion, all in favor, um, it's a voice vote, chair votes aye. Ms. Khan.
Aye.
Mister Henry.
Aye.
Mister Alfeld. Ms. Greenbaum.
Uh.
The findings have passed. Now we come to a motion to approve. The request for a variance to to amend the FY twenty twenty-four dash eleven variance for modification of conditions one and two. To raise the building slightly so that the maximum height when measured from grade will be fifty-nine point five for. Property located at four two two Amity Street, map thirteen B parcel eighteen, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and fifty-four. Be a limited business this zoning district with conditions. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. That we approve this, um. The chair, chair votes aye, Ms. Greenbaum.
Aye.
Mister Alfeld. Mister Henry.
Aye.
And Ms. Khan.
Aye.
I heard Mister Alfeld's aye, so the vote is five to nothing. The motion passes. And the variance is granted.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thanks, all of you again, especially at this late hour. You're all the best.
Okay.
And Mister Varner, thank you for sticking around just in case. All right. Um, next order of business is public comment on any matter not before the board tonight. Though anybody who wants to speak about anything except what's before us. Um, has the right to do so for three minutes. Do you see any hands? Anybody else such, um? So determined to stay in and talk to us at six, ten o'clock?
Yeah, flood is still here, but she can't talk about Amity.
I think there's nobody else that wants to, I see no hands up.
No, no hands.
We're the last lonely stragglers, the last only cowboys are out tonight. Um. The next order of business is unfinished business. Normally, we talk about the upcoming meetings. Can you give us a quick rundown, Ms. Williams, of what we have coming up for the next two meetings?
Sure, I'm gonna share my screen. Um. All right, so we voted to continue. Sixty-three, sixty-five to April tenth. So I'm just gonna work backwards from there. Um, that night, we also have one twenty Beltray Town, and we also have Chutesbury Solar, but that's um. Probably gonna be the bulk of it for that evening. I don't anticipate anyone else. Coming through at this time. That would be able to make it on to the April tenth meeting. Um. March twenty-seventh, we have just seventy-two Curtis Place, so it'll be the opposite of this meeting, which might be nice for some people. Um, that's the only thing that we have so far for the next two weeks, so I think we are all caught up. Unless a flurry of applications come through, and then they'll just have to go on. The four twenty-four calendar date or beyond that, so that's where we are right now. Um, and before I forget, I will just say this, moving forward, I will just be emailing everybody. Moving forward for ZBA hearings, so that way associate members and full-time members. Are all privy to the same information. That way you have it in. Case somebody needs to jump in in a pinch, you already have meeting packets, you're already. Case somebody needs to jump in in a pinch, you already have meeting packets, you're already aware of what's going on. I think. After this evening's, uh, you know, like musical chairs, and like, you know what, I'm just gonna keep everybody on the mailing list, and, you know. That way everyone is prepared to, you know, step in as needed. Um, cause you guys are all valuable to us, so there's no reason why you shouldn't be part of the regular email chain as well. Um, so I did wanna.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Hilda. That doesn't mean bombard me with a ton of questions.
But to avoid confusion, make sure to check to see whether you're on that panel for those nights or on each night or not. And so. That's important, so we can make sure we have everybody there.
Yes, please, thank you.
I think that's a good idea, so when you, do you send those emails, Ms. Williams, just put. Who's on what panel with whatever is on for that schedule, yeah?
Yes, yes. Noted, thank you.
All right, we did a lot of work tonight, it's ten thirteen, we've gone almost an hour and fifteen minutes longer than we normally go. I appreciate the hard work of all of you, uh, thank you so much. Uh, for putting up with um this long night and um. We'll see you, I, well, I won't see you in two weeks, but I'll see you, uh, the next month, I'll be gone for the next meeting. Mister Henry, you'll have the duty of being the chair at the next meeting. How I wish, all right, thank you all.
Thank you all.
We we gotta have a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Thankfully, there's no discussion on this. The vote occurs on the motion to adjourn, judge votes aye, Alfeld.
Aye.
Khan.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
I'm gonna vote two, aye.
And Greenbaum. And Williams. Vote is five to nothing, plus one, the. Motion passes.
I did fall asleep.